Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 0001 Pursuant to Section 84-1411 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on March 17th, 2017. and the Board of Educational Service Unit Number 19 will be held on Monday, April 3rd, 2017 at 6:30 PM The meeting will convene at 6:30 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cummings Street. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the administrative building during regular working hours. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president, so please attend the entire meeting to ensure you are able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to Section 84-1412 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Right, and Vice President Snow will now lead us in the OPS vision and mission statement.
We'll start with the vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Gadding.
Present.
Holman.
Is it Holman or Pearlman?
Holman.
Present.
America.
Present.
Palermo.
Present.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Here.
Williams.
Present.
Nine present.
All right, we will move on to item F, which is Board and Superintendent Communications. First is Treasure and Mrs. Connie Kinoki.
Financial statements for your review.
All right, we'll move on to superintendent report and Mr. Mark Evans.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'd just like to give a reach out to the Norris School family. Many of you may have heard, we lost one of our students in a tragic car accident, Kevin Ramirez Cabreras. We have grief counselors at Norris Middle School and would just like to ask the audience to keep the family and all the school family and community in your thoughts and prayers. Next, I'd like to just mention that we've done and are preparing to complete all of our community and PTO interviews with Burke and Benson. As you know, we're moving forward on a principal search in those two schools and I wanted the board and community to know that their meetings are scheduled this week and one meeting, I believe, next week to complete that. And finally, just wanted to make a statement that I know sometimes when it's challenging and sometimes we see a focus on one aspect of our very large district with 52,000 great, great young people, we might think that things aren't going well in 90 schools. And I'm just here to tell you that we have great kids doing a great job led by great staff and some of them are here in this audience tonight. And I don't want this community to think that anything is being lost in our schools, that none of our children in a spot where they're not being well-served, in fact, they're being very well-served. And if you'd like, I've done many community tours, always happy to do that, to show you the wonderful things that happen in our schools every single day because of community volunteers, great teachers, great administrators, great and loving parents, and great young people that just continue to do outstandingly well. So I don't want that to be lost in some of the hype that goes along with changes and challenges that are inherent to a system. We still are doing a great job every single day in all of our schools and I just want to thank all of our staff and thank all of our parents and community folks making that happen. So I just don't want that to be lost as we move forward in some of the processes with leadership. Thank you, Madam President.
All right, moving on to board member reports. Dr. Holman.
I'd like to piggyback off of what Mr. Evans said in regards to the tremendous experience and opportunities that our students are allowed in our schools. I had the extreme pleasure today, one of the best days I've had in a very long time in spending the full day in some of our schools. Our students are just so talented and they're so knowledgeable and our teachers do such a tremendous jobs in our classrooms in preparing our students despite all the challenges that our district is facing right now. And I'd like to thank Mr. Lee from Northwest High School, Ms. Reinsch from Pine Wood Elementary, and then Dr. Griffin from Masters Elementary. I had a wonderful time today and look forward to spending more time in other schools this week.
Ms. Williams.
Two things. One, I wanted to, there was a lot of conversation about, I testified on behalf of the Board of Education on Tuesday, I believe it was, it seemed like a million years ago. And I really appreciate the comments from our district because truly it was my honor to represent all of you, to be about our public education and our public education system and just know that regardless of what happens, we are here to support you and we appreciate each and every one of you from our administrators to our custodial staff, to our bus drivers. That is something that I want to share with you, is that everything that we do here, we do here together. And whatever this looks like, we're doing this together, no matter what any outside person says. That's important for you to know. It's important for our district to know that we are a district together and none of us can do this work by themselves. So it truly was my honor to represent the Board of Education and Omaha Public Schools in Lincoln last week. And I also want to say thank you to all of the community members, all of the constituents that have reached out. Although I haven't been able to answer every email and return every phone call, I appreciate what you have sent on behalf of this process. I hear you, I'm listening to you, and I do appreciate the feedback that you have given to me as the representative for Sub District 1 and that your voices are being heard. So I just wanted to thank you for reaching out and communicating with me through this process.
Ms. Gadding, or Mrs. Gadding.
So I just want to share a success story of a former student who graduated from Central High School in 2013. He recently participated in, and Dr. Bennett helped me with this, so I think it's the Bousse Dor competition in France, which is the Olympics of cooking. He was a student at Central who also took dual enrollment credits here at the Career Center, attended Metro for a very short period of time, and then went on to California and went on to team up with Matthew Peters, who was the head chef, and they won the gold medal of cooking for the world championships. I think it's the second time the United States has won that. And last week, I had the pleasure of watching Harrison on The Jimmy Kimmel Show where he awarded Jimmy Kimmel a scarf that was the team scarf. So there were, I think, three individuals on the team. But I just want to give a shout out to the Culinary Arts Department here at TAC because had it not been for you sparking an interest in a young man, who knows where his career path would have gone, but he's having great success. And so that's just a great story for OPS.
Mr. Scanlon.
Just, I guess, it's great to see board members getting into the buildings and to interact with the principals, teachers, kids. And I will say that, you know, all too often that at the board level sometimes you get very discouraged and everything and the politics kind of kick you down. But when you go visit those schools, it really does rejuvenate your excitement and you see the excitement of these kids and the potential of these kids. And that is really, I guess my only advice would be when you're feeling like, "I'm not making a difference," go down to the schools and go visit them and it really does make a huge difference because the positivity at the school level, the building level, is magnificent. And we have the best staff of educators, teachers, administrators that we could be, that we're very fortunate to have. So I would, you know, as you kind of get, you know, beat up a little bit, go down and visit a school and that'll rejuvenate your energy. And I've done that a couple of times and it's really helped.
Anyone else? Then I will agree 100% with Mr. Scanlon. In the midst of the superintendent interview and meet and greet days, I was invited to come read to a kindergarten class at Beals that had been anxiously waiting for me to read to them all year. And that was just a nice step back, refreshing moment to touch base with some of our very youngest students. And then I said, "I would remind everyone, you should be receiving an invitation to the upcoming Artist to Teacher to Artist art exhibition, which this year again is at Hot Shops from April 1st to April 28." Essentially, a lot of times we don't think of our art teachers in our public schools as artists on their own right to. And so a selected group of art teachers create art and have it on display and it is always amazing to go visit and see how truly talented our teachers are. And they'll be having an opening reception for that on April 1st that I hope some of you are able to make it to. All right, we will move on to public comment then. I believe Mr. Ray said we have 22 forms submitted for public comment currently. The board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour. That same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. Given the number of speakers, we ask that to the extent that you are able, you keep your comments brief so that we can hear from as many of you as possible in the allotted time. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know and one will be provided for you. By its very nature, public comment is a reflection of the opinions of the speaker and public comment is not a reflection of the opinions of Omaha Public Schools Board of Education. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about and we ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff number by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray and he will make sure each member of the board receives a copy. One final note about public comment, since we are not usually aware of what topics speakers are likely to comment on and since those topics are not on our agenda, we as a board generally refrain from engaging in discussion with members of the public during the public comment period. While we understand that sometimes there is a desire to engage in direct dialogue or back and forth with the board, given the time constraints, we encourage you to reach out to each of us directly if you would like to discuss your concerns in greater depth. And as a reminder, when each person comes up, we do ask that you spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. All right, it is now 6:48 PM. And our first speaker is Sandy Velashin.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Velashin, listen carefully, W-L-A-S-C-H-I-N. I am a parent of two students with OPS. My address is 6029 North 109th Street and I am a teacher downtown here at Liberty Elementary. And here we are at a point of utmost importance. And now is the time we make a choice to work together as a team. When we continue in the manner we have been, our students are the ones who suffer the most. I am a parent and an educator who is disappointed in how the board's actions have reflected poorly on our district's teachers, students, and families. Whether intentional or not, it appears that the board is not focused on what is best for all students in OPS, but instead is focused on personal agendas. This has created a divided school board and has brought negative publicity to our school district. Our students deserve the best. Today, that means that every single one of us in this room, in this city, get involved in their education and need to come together to make Omaha the best place for students to learn and grow. As a parent and as a teacher that you represent, I am asking you to be professional and thoughtful. I ask you to voice your opinions honestly and to be open to others' opinions as well. And I am expecting you to represent us in as dignified a manner as possible that is focused on supporting each and every one of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gina Miller. And I should add, on deck will be Mary McHale.
Gina Miller, G-I-N-A-M-I-L-L-E-R. I am an active OPS parent of children that attend the district. I guess I would like to first start off with, I appreciate the kind comments from the board members and from Mr. Evans with the support of the district. But as a parent that opens the paper every day and has OPS on the front headline and in every news article and on every TV program every night, my children are affected. Our teachers are affected and every one of the parents are affected. And we have to stop the chaos. It has to discontinue. As you know, I have been a strong supporter of this board and previous boards, but I have no words to explain what I have experienced over the last months, weeks, but especially over the last few days. This behavior that I have been witnessing by board members would not be tolerated in one of our kindergarten classrooms, let alone behavior at a board table. The only thing I have left in my arsenal to use is to use my mom voice to the board. I'm frustrated, I'm tired, I'm embarrassed, and I'm disappointed. This is where the rubber meets the road, ladies and gentlemen. It is time to put on our big girl and big boy pants and become adults and learn to work together. Whatever the issues are behind the scene, either fix them or bring them to the forefront so everyone knows what is happening. There are no more excuses. There are no new board members. You have all been here long enough to know how this works. Get it figured out now. I'm pleading with you. If a board member or a group of members had an issue with a particular candidate, you should have publicly addressed that and let the public know about your concerns. You try and persuade people to understand what the limitations are. You suggest we continue the process. You express concerns of the quality of the search firm and their ability to bring high-qualified candidates. You don't wait till the 11th hour and look like a bunch of schoolkids in a brawl. These candidates did not deserve that and this district does not deserve that and my kids do not deserve that from their leaders. To the search firm, as someone who has been a recruiter for the majority of my professional career, I am embarrassed. How can a search firm, of all things, allow something like this to happen? The reason to have a search firm is to make sure the candidates are properly vetted. Are you telling me that the first candidate did not know who she was or was not going to meet with prior to coming on site for the interview process, Sess? That's ridiculous if true. Are you telling me that this candidate had a concern that she did not meet with the OEA or school principals and did not bring that concern to the search firm or board's attention? If so, was that request denied and if so, shame on you. In regards to the last two candidates, what happened? Having candidates, especially superintendent candidates, is like having a witness in a mob case under protective custody. You guard those candidates with your life. They are highly sought after and knowing the dynamics of this district, you have to be even more cautious. As a search firm and recruiter, you should be on top of any and all concerns that they and/or your hiring managers, the board, have about the process and the final decisions. The vote was not even taken and there were several days from being taken. Who gave the search firm permission to notify the candidates of a split vote? How did the media get the information about the candidates withdrawing prior to the board members? I expect answers from the search firm about these questions before one more move is made. To the forces working against final candidates, what was it about them that you disliked? An honest answer about charter schools, that there is no need for charter schools if your public school is the best option? That is the right answer. Was it an energized candidate with a passion for talking directly to kids and the parents possibly not being able to be controlled by typical powers-to-be? This is exactly what this district needs and what parents and stakeholders have been asking for. We have not only lost an exciting candidate, we are now viewed as a district that is unwilling to consider minority candidates into a position of power. We now have the highest-paid teachers with the lowest morale. In my opinion, you have just kissed the second bond away because there is no taxpayer in their right mind that would accept, that would give you one more cent with the dysfunction that is being witnessed here on a daily basis. Except for the poor parents like myself who so desperately need a new school in our area. But you have lost my vote. All of our kids got up and got on buses and cars headed to school to try and learn today. All of our teachers got up this morning and went to work to try and make a difference, even in the midst of this chaos, and they all deserve better. I have heard some of you, some in the community, say, "Hit the pause button and start over." You don't start over from this. You now settle. Yeah, I'm tired of settling and our kids deserve better.
Next up is Mary McHale and on deck is Pastor Cedric Perkins.
My name is Mary McHale, M-C capital H-A-L-E, and I live at 5009 Isard Street, Omaha, Nebraska. And I'm here to talk about something different, about two concerns that I have with Omaha Public Schools Transition Program. The first concern is with the Project Search Program. Project Search is a nationwide program run by vocational rehab throughout the United States for students in their last year of education within a public school district receiving special education services. Typically, the student is 20 years old and is in the last year of their transition program, but it can also be a 17 or an 18-year-old student. OPS had a Project Search Program with Nebraska Vocational Rehab, NVR, until the spring of 2016. At that time, OPS informed NVR that OPS was terminating their contract with NVR Project Search. The Project Search site, Embassy Suites in the Old Market, did not have enough job training activities to have eight to 10 OPS students take part and also did not have enough Java activities for the students during the day. It was the intent of both OPS and NVR for NVR to come up with another Project Search site for OPS that would best meet the needs of the students. It is now one year after that contract was terminated and no Project Search Program for the 2016 transition students. As of today, there is not a Project Search site for the 2017, 2018 transition students, which will mean it will be two years without Project Search. OPS is the only school district in the Omaha area that doesn't have a Project Search Program. When I've spoken with OPS Special Education, NVR, and the interested site who wants to host a program for our students, I am hearing different things. Interested site and OPS Special Ed have spoken. NVR is working on something. No one has contacted our office, et cetera. In the business world, if I waited for a phone call or an email to find out the status of a program I was working on, I could be waiting a long time. I find it difficult to understand why the three interested parties cannot schedule a meeting to discuss this great opportunity for OPS transition. a meeting to discuss this great opportunity for OPS transition students. At this point, as a parent, I think of those students, approximately twenty from this school year and twenty from the next school year, that haven't had this opportunity. Project Search has an eighty-five to ninety-five percent success rate in offering jobs to its graduates. I thought OPS vision was every day, every student prepared for success. Project Search offers that vision to its participants. When will this program begin again at OPS? At this rate, it'll be a third year without any Project Search. The second concern is with the three OPS Transition Program sites. I urge the OPS Board, if you have not done so already, to visit the OPS Transition Program sites. There are three: Career Center, around thirty students; South, can have no more than fifty students; and PBA has had over a hundred students. Since there are new board members, it's a great opportunity to go see these sites and see the conditions that OPS teachers and staff work in to provide special education services. With the exception of the South Transition Site, site that opened October two thousand sixteen, the other two sites are dingy, crowded, and not inviting for learning. I find it interesting that OPS continues to pay rent for over twenty years to the PVS Transition Site. I'm told that OPS is looking for other buildings. It took almost three years for OPS to obtain and renovate the South Site. Really? In the Omaha World Herald last week, there was an article where UNMC is buying land from OPS, where the OPS Alternative School Parish currently is located. And what a surprise, since UNMC paid OPS for the old site approximately two million, there's already another location purchased for this, this program, starting school year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. What would be done with that extra money? Since I don't believe it'll take two million dollars to purchase, the latest Douglas County assessor had an evaluation of around fifty-seven thousand dollars and renovate a building for thirty-six students. How does this happen for a program with thirty-six students, yet a program with over a hundred students continues to be held in three locations and paying rent on two of the locations? OPS doesn't have community partners to partner with in effort as this? How is the district able to select a site for the new elementary and secondary schools and purchase that land so quickly, yet continues to struggle finding a site for the transition program? The cynic in me says it's because it's a program for students receiving special education services, that this can, since this continues to not be a priority for OPS. Since a new transition site was not included in the last bond initiative in two thousand fourteen, if there is another one, I urge the OPS Board to not forget those students. These are still OPS students, and as the parent of some, the son of the transition program, I want the best for my son, just like any other OPS parent or guardian. Don't make these students have to settle for second bets. Let these students have an A-plus education, which includes the building and facilities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Mr. Ray, if you could facilitate an update on the Project Search status going forward, that would be appreciated. Next up is Pastor Cedric Perkins, and on deck is Dr. Ed Bennett.
Good evening to each and every one of you, board members. I first want to say thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you, and thank you for your service, that you serve this community. Thank you Superintendent Evans for your service over the past few years. I come tonight not to criticize nor talk about a problem. I come to give a solution. It is my honor and privilege tonight to like to recommend one to this board who will do a great job as superintendent. Your process has failed. You have the ability to appoint someone now without going through the process all over again. You also have the ability to not push these things further down the road by selecting an intern, to be in position while we twiddle our thumbs and wait till we find the right candidate when the right person is among you. The person I speak of is none other than Dr. Deborah Freisen. Dr. Freisen has served this district. She served as Assistant Principal at King Science Center, Assistant Principal at Central High School, Principal of Morton Middle School, Principal of King Science and Technology Magnet Center, which became a model school for this nation. Also Burke High School, that also made great strides in this nation. Dr. Freisen, everywhere she's gone, you know her. She has been one who have excelled greatly. Dr. John McHale, our former superintendent, retired superintendent stated this: "Dr. Freisen possesses the ultimate can-do attitude while taking on all tasks with passion, positive energy. Her engaging personal style enables her to interact effectively with students, parents, and staff. She is fully involved in the curricular and extracurricular activities of the school and district. All the intangibles that lead to success in the workplace are in order with Dr. Freisen. Her ability to work with diverse groups, her integrity, and proven skills as an administrator serves her well." Not only Dr. McHale, Dr. Jerry Barti. He spoke, "Dr. Freisen has reestablished King Science as a magnet program in its true sense. Not only is the magnet program effective in its students' draw to enhance the student assignment plan, it has become neighborhood school of example. Focus on instructional improvement and safe and secure environment are enhanced by tremendous planning and leadership skills." Dr. Freisen now, she serves as our Deputy Commissioner of Education for the State of Nebraska. Being in this position, she is making great strides, great accomplishments. She will serve OPS well. She's not one that you will have to have to get to know the school district. She knows the landscape. She knows these principals, and they know her. She doesn't have to get time out, take time out to learn the students and the kids in the neighborhoods. She's one of you. Somebody may say, "We need somebody from the outside to come in and fix this." No, you need someone who has the ability, who has the connection inside and outside of Lincoln as well. She's part of the, she's part of the administration. She has connections there. She provides leaderships and oversight to assign department staff and coordinate work with all areas of the department that impact the education system, provides leadership and the development of inter- internal systems that focus on continuous evaluation program and improvement. I can go on and on about her, but you may say, "Well, if she was interested, why didn't, you know, she apply?" We, maybe she needs to apply. Well, I recommend that you reach out to her. She has proven who she is. Her track record proves who she is. When, if, 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 if she would have applied, would you have selected her? Because of the fact, in times past, when she was there, maybe not this board, but others have been slighted. And when you have been slighted in the past, it's kind of hard to apply for something. And I'd close by saying to you, we need somebody at three o'clock in the morning to answer that call, to be able to let us know that school's going to be closed the next day or whatever situation comes up. She has the ability. Matt Ray is an example. She trained Matt Ray. She's part of his success. My name is Dr. Cedric L. Perkins, and I approve this message.
All right. Next up is Dr. Ed Bennett, and on deck is Bridget Donovan. And if I could remind everyone to please state and spell your name and address when you start.
If I'd known, I would have to follow Dr. Perkins. I might not have been here. My name is Dr. Ed Bennett, E.D.B.E.N.N.E.T.T. I'm at one-four-nine-zero-five Potter Street. Mr. Evans, President America, Vice President Snow, and members of the Omaha Public Schools Board of Education. My name is Dr. Ed Bennett, and I stand before you today, not representing the Central High School Foundation or Central High School as such, but as President of the Omaha School Administrators Association. I represent the collective voice of the OPS Building Principals, Assistant Principals, and other OPS staff members that you see standing behind me, as well as others who are in full support but who could not be here this evening. In fact, my words tonight are respectfully expressed with the full support of six of seven OPS High School Building Principals, every OPS Middle School Building Principal, the vast majority of elementary principals. As you will soon hear from OEA President Bridget Donovan, this message is also aligned with that of OEA leadership. Because Mr. Evans announced his retirement, and now that all three finalists for superintendent have withdrawn their candidacy, we know that you as a board are considering your options, one of which is to select an interim superintendent. To the extent that Mr. Evans does not, in fact, fill that position, and none of the three finalists reapplies, we urge you to look internally for the most qualified person for the position of interim superintendent. And we believe that person is Dr. Renee Kerberg. In a country with a fiercely divided political climate and certainly a divided OPS board, we realize that reaching agreement on this decision continues to be challenging. However, while you as a board may be divided, we as building leaders standing with OEA are not. We believe in our district, and we take great pride in what we do. We have talented administrators and teachers in our district who care deeply about the students that we serve. We're also extremely fortunate that we are in such strong agreement that Dr. Kerberg is the most qualified internal candidate and should be the interim superintendent, should Mr. Evans not return. Over the past five years, we have seen student achievement increase to its highest level ever under the strong leadership of Mr. Evans. But we also know that the chief architect of the academic action plan that led directly to those results is Dr. Kerberg. She provides the expertise and the support buildings need to make sure our teachers and students are receiving the best possible instructional experiences. And those experiences have paid off in rapidly improving achievement. Improving achievement in turn leads to community pride and support for district initiatives and bond issues that truly help a district flourish with opportunities for students. It is critical that with Mr. Evans no longer at the helm, that we sustain that upward momentum, and Dr. Kerberg gives us the best possible chance of making that happen. To briefly summarize the themes of the comments from those I heard from yesterday, building administrators truly value Dr. Kerberg's history in our district and commitment to OPS. She understands who we are, what we're about, how our district operates, and what constitutes the soul of OPS, which we jeopardize if we cannot find common ground. Over the past few years, and even in today's World Herald editorial, this board has been criticized for being divided, for making change too quickly, for being unappealing to superintendent candidates, and for not listening closely to those in the buildings who are doing the heavy lifting every day to meet the needs of fifty-two thousand students. You're also aware of the low morale that the events of the last few days have only exacerbated. Fortunately, an opportunity now exists to silence those critics. The message that I delivered for you tonight, on behalf of the overwhelming majority of internal OPS leaders that you see standing behind me, is crystal clear. If you decide to select an interim superintendent and Mr. Evans remains retired, OPS internal leaders and OEA leadership urge you to select Dr. Kerberg. Please come together and give this your thoughtful consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bridget Donovan, and on deck is Chris Foster.
Good evening. I'm Bridget Donovan, D.O.N.O.V.A.N., and I am the President of the Omaha Education Association. I'm here to speak about the superintendent search. So we are the professionals of this district. We are not here for a three- or four-year term. We're in it for the long haul. We are dedicated to the students of the district. I've been told that I'm not very good at finessing my message, and I'll own that. I believe in direct communication and saying exactly what I mean. I want to tell you that I believe in this district. The educators, the teachers believe in this district. The non-members of the Education Association believe in this district. The administrators believe in this district. This is our life. This is what we have chosen to do. This is who we are. And our opinions and our judgment should be valued. And I am telling you that right now, that's not the message you're sending. Right now, we don't feel like you value our opinions and our judgment. When you embarked on this search, you made a choice to not include the main stakeholders in your decision-making process, not in a, not in a valuable way. And arguably, nobody has a greater stake in this district than the educators, the families, and the administrators of this district. We have reached out time and time again, asking you to include us as part of your decision-making process. You had three candidates who had now withdrawn from this role. I can't speak as to why, because I don't know. Nobody here, I believe, can speak to that, because we don't know. If you want our trust, if you want our respect, if you want our support, you need to include your stakeholders meaningfully. And I am here tonight to address the fact that we have been hearing through the grapevine that you are considering interim superintendent. And if you are considering the interim superintendent, then I am here to tell you that we believe the interim superintendent should be Dr. Kerberg. And if you know our history, then you know I don't say that lightly. This association has not always been in agreement with Dr. Kerberg, but what we have learned over the years is that she is willing to listen and to respond to those who have concerns. Dr. Bennett already spoke to her qualifications. I'm not sure that I can add any more to it, but if you are looking for an educational leader, a curriculum leader, you have the person you need in Doc, in Dr. Kerberg. I don't know what else to say, but that you have to find a way to include us, not just me, not just the administrators, but the families as well. You have to do that. We've offered a couple of suggestions and solutions. Us contacting you individually is not a transparent process. It isn't. We have reached out and we have asked to have meetings with your president and your vice president, with our president and our vice president. Because I don't like the feeling of moving behind people's backs. And if we keep it open and transparent, then you don't get that impression. I agree with so many of the comments. You are our leaders, and I think I do know how hard you work, and I have said that on the record many times in the past.
Thirty seconds.
You need, please, to listen to the people who are most affected by this decision meaningfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Chris Foster, and after that is Dr. Adrian Petrescu.
Hi, Chris Foster, thirty-four thirteen California Street, last name F.O.S.T.E.R. Myself, the next few speakers are going to take in a little different direction. We're really excited about our new Gifford Park, Thirty-second and Burt Elementary School, which is going to be built right across the street, opening in two thousand nineteen. And we just wanted to share some, some positive, like I said, exciting comments. Yates Elementary was closed in nineteen ninety-nine, and it was actually the longest-running PT in Nebraska when the school was open in, in nineteen seventeen, so a hundred years ago. And the community fought very hard, and finally in two thousand fourteen, thanks to Mark Snow and, and other OPS board members that listened and, and supported putting the new school, getting a new school in this neighborhood, on the, the bond, the bond issue passed. And I want to also thank Omaha Public Schools, Creighton University, New Style Development for negotiating the land sale of the vacant parking lots that Creighton had, so that our reality can happen and we keep Yates Community Center open also. The past couple of months, and I think you have received the, from Jacobs, the ED Spec, Educational specification document, that we've worked very hard, and you'll hear from a few of our other neighborhood folks on the committee. We've got about a dozen of us, community folks, working with OPS administrators, Jacobs, Jackson and Jackson Architects, and feel it's a very strong partnership. We appreciate having so many of us on there, but we're very passionate, committed, and glad to participate. And so we're looking forward to future meetings and discussion about things like our multicultural, international flavor to our neighborhood, green- international flavor to our neighborhood, green spaces, using, being efficient with parking, and really just having the school be like a second home to kids in the neighborhood and for it to be designed and resourced for parents, teachers, students, so they're attracted to it. So, again, we just want to extend our appreciation to OPS administration for the process so far, and we're excited about what's coming up.
All right, thank you. I'm going to try it again. Next is Dr. Adrian Petrescu.
Perfect. The second time's a charm. You're becoming a native Romanian. My name is Dr. Adrian Petrescu. I represent Gifford Park Neighborhood Association, I suppose. And let me say just this. I, we're sorry that we came with our agenda item on this other agenda item that sort of by far trumps ours, but we really, we really want to echo what Chris opened up with. We were so, so impressed with how administration managed to meet the Gifford Park Neighborhood EdSpec Committee halfway. We literally saw their determination to help us build a soul in this school. You know, it was, it was in the beginning when we saw 15 administrators and there were 13 or 15 of us, I think many of us are here in the EdSpec Committee, since everybody stands up, maybe ours should also stand up. We're not as impressive, but, but Gifford Park Neighborhood. You know, after many years since 99, we will have a school, and that is so exciting. And so we all sat down together for three months, and they listened to us. Everybody listened to us. They did their work, they did their research, they tried to see and understand who we are. And we were so impressed when they managed to show us, OPS managed to show us, that they know very well who we are. In fact, I was so impressed when they managed to define Gifford Park with one word: diversity. And that's who we are. We are a diverse neighborhood. I have to tell you, I was born in Romania, in case you haven't realized from the name. And so, English is my third language. I started speaking English at the age of seven. I studied German at the age of four. In the last 17 years, I've been teaching mostly graduate school in public policy, education policy, those folks who eventually end up working for OPS, you know, graduate students with master's thesis in education. And now, in the last year or so, I teach adults literacy. I teach those folks who, among the 36,500 adults in Douglas County, do not actually have a high school diploma or GED. Well, we have 52,000 students and 36,500 adults who don't have a high school diploma or GED, many of whom have English as a second or third language. Now, these parents are the parents of the children who, many of them, come to school. Well, if the children don't have a parent to supervise properly at home, it's kind of hard to expect success, right? A school is a pillar in a community. For the many years that we didn't have a school in Gifford Park, we compensated. Of course, all the children went to OPS anyway, but we compensated. So what did we do? We did a bike shop, we did a community garden, we did the adventure playground, which is now, I'm sorry to say, but it is nationally renowned, okay? Neighborhood USA recognized it, second prize in the nation as a community initiative to help children grow. Well, so we want the school to be exactly that: multicultural, international, open to diversity, welcoming to who we are, to seeing all the nation's nationalities and languages that we speak in Gifford Park, but also transfer, as a second home, as Chris said, transfer all the activities that bring together children, whether they're homeschooled or OPS schooled, who made-
One minute.
-the children collaborate and do not see, I mean, see each other for who they are and recognize and complement each other with their own personalities across gender, race, ethnicity, culture, anything. You know, suffice it to say that in 1977, this school had Alan Heger for a student in eighth grade at Yates. He is, I suppose, the one and only Nobel Prize laureate Nebraska has. He received the Nobel Prize in Chemistry in 2000-
Thirty seconds.
-and this is the culture that gives birth to this type of creativity and innovation. And we want this school to represent exactly that. And so maybe it has the opportunity to be that beacon of possibility that will unite not just us as partners with OPS, but OPS internally to itself, the board with us, with the administration, so that we actually show the entire country and the world what can Nebraska bring as it has done in the past. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Matthew Cronin and on deck is Brent Lubbert.
Always fun following Adrian. Matthew Cronin, I live at 3409 California Street, 68131. I'm part of this EdSpec Committee that was part of the Gifford Park Neighborhood School, and I really thank you for your time and the opportunity to be on that committee. I think it is really valuable and was really critical for us to feel included in this process. I'll be brief. I've come to talk about the value and necessity of green spaces and edible landscapes in our new community school. Gifford Park's culture is one that values our commons, you know, whether it's, like Adrian mentioned, our adventure playground, our soccer field where we have hundreds of kids every day in the summer playing, or the, or the community garden. Our green spaces are integral to the fabric of Gifford Park. And as we repeatedly stated in our EdSpec Committee, they must be central in our new school. You know, the youth in our community are grounded in hands-on opportunities to grow, learn, and play. We have edible landscapes that help bridge the disconnect that many of our kids in OPS face, and where does your food come from? It's not just the grocery store, you know? In our community, it's from our neighborhood. You know, many of our neighborhood neighbors are food insecure, and we believe that is through educating our youth around food production, cooking, and seed sharing, that these basic skills that have become, frankly, specialized, become commonplace again. You know, our great concern in this process is that now that we are done with our committee as a whole, that we've given our input, that our limits and space are going to define our green space to, you know, no bigger than this section in this room. And we want to make sure that the board is aware and supportive of creative opportunities and alternatives to just the strict. We need to have 30 stalls for all of the staff. And we have the TAC Building and all these satellite sites all around the campus right here, trying to utilize the existing OPS infrastructure as part of that long-term vision, we hope, is part of your guys' picture too. I thank you for your time. I just wanted to bring to light that we are committed to this and hope to see it through. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Brent Lubbert and on deck will be Martin Janasek.
Thank you. Brent Lubbert, it's L-U-B-B-E-R-T, and I live right up the street, 3322 Burt Street, so I had the privilege to walk here today. It is nice. And not to distract from a larger message of tonight, I want to speak about the EdSpec Committee. I want to thank you for serving on the board and thank the administrators who took time after their busy day, selflessly inspiring many young people in our community to educate themselves and to grow into better humans to then, after all that, participate on the EdSpec Committee to build a new school in our community. And I just want to get straight to the point. Gifford Park has been establishing a growing culture within the neighborhood. 28 years ago, started with a spring cleanup where neighborhood, neighbors got together, started cleaning up the park. Then there was the establishment of the community garden 16 years ago, which then developed a youth garden program that has an amazing curriculum that centers on the student to take ownership of tasks and learn from that. And then, then there was the establishment of the farmer's market that takes place, 33rd and California, Friday nights, 5 to 8, and where many young growers get to step foot into the business of market farming. And then, recently, six years ago, Big Muddy Urban Farms started, and we grow on seven sites in the neighborhood here, which three sites are within a block of the neighborhood school. And so, it's been my privilege to be a part of that for the past six years. We also have now developed an aspiring farmer residency program where we are growing farmers to participate in market farming and becoming local food leaders. So, my point tonight is that there is a lot of support from the neighborhood side to support garden initiatives at the new schools. So I encourage you to believe in gardening education as it is proposed to you with the new school directive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Martin Janasek and on deck is Shane Strong.
Martin Janasek, 4602 Center Street, J-A-N-O-U-S-E-K. I'm here to also thank the board, the OPS faculty and staff, along with Jacobs and Jackson &amp; Jackson. It's been a good process so far with the EdSpec Committee. As you've heard with some of the other people from Gifford Park, we're a very active neighbor association. We're very involved with not only just the day-to-day activities of living in a neighborhood, but we're actually very active in programs and such, and we'd like to see this new school to be a reflection of what we are as a culture, the people, and the welcoming aspects of our, of our community. We feel as though the architecture is important and to show who we are, and so as we move forward, we look forward to working not only with OPS and their architects, but also the city of Omaha when it comes to zoning and other aspects of a true urban neighborhood school. And I know that will be a lot of challenges along the way. As said earlier by Matt Cronin and Brent, we do have a very conscious attitude in our neighborhood. Not only is it walkable, but we also think it's very hospitable to people who may not have access to other modes of transportation. And so we would like to see the school to be challenging to this neighborhood and that the car and the large amount of parking lots around our community is not the focus, but instead, the aspects that our neighborhood is very walkable, it's very approachable. We want this to be a place for kids to feel welcomed, and we feel as though programs come and go, people evolve, but in the end, 50 years from now, our structures and what we do and how we place them on a site will be an indication of our culture. And so we find that's very important, and we look forward to working forward and further with OPS. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up is Shane Strong and after that is Leslie Wessel.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shane Strong, S-T-R-O-N-G, and I live at 3419 Hawthorne Avenue. And if you don't know, I'm from Beavis Park, and if you don't know where that is, it's Catty Corner from the TAC Building, right across Cummings Street. We were part of the EdSpec process as well, and the reason why I'm here tonight is because Beavis Park and Montclair will not be part of the proposed boundaries. I realize that's not on our docket tonight, it's going to be discussed in two weeks because of scheduling issues. But I wanted to just talk very briefly about the potential of including Beavis Park, Montclair, and how we can strengthen other neighborhood schools. So I don't know if Mr. Ray, if you distributed the document that we made for the EdSpec, okay, well, we'll make sure that you get that afterwards. I just want to make a point of clarification. Beavis Park is going to be reaching out to neighborhood associations and trying to gather support for what we have as an alternative boundary. It has the support of Beavis Park by unanimous vote, also has the support of Gifford Park, excuse me. And so, because I don't have any demonstratives and things aren't going to be presented, I'm going to cut this very short, but if you have questions about it, if I pique your interest, please reach out to me. Mr. Ray has my information. Also, he has the information that will be presented in two weeks approximately, and I really encourage you, please reach out to me. I'm very passionate about this. I think that this could be a very good opportunity for the entire district. And I'm second to last, so we're almost done here. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We'll make sure Mr. Ray sends that out to all the board members. Next is Leslie Wessel and on deck is Lisa Carlson.
I'm Leslie Wessel, W-E-S-S-E-L, 316 North 36th Avenue. And I'm the last one, I promise, from Gifford Park. I also serve on the EdSpec Committee. I'm an OPS parent. I have four children, two of them currently attend Callum Elementary and two are not old enough for school yet. I serve on the PTA at Callum and I'm also the representative on the District Citizens' Advisory Committee. I'm proud to send my kids to Callum, and I am also very excited that we're going to have a neighborhood school once again. What I just wanted to bring to your attention is that while, during the EdSpec process, something that, that came out, that came to our attention is that, this isn't part of your document for approval, but I just wanted to highlight the significant impact that this new school is going to have on Callum. Under the proposed boundary, many of Callum's students, including my children, will go to the new school, and the capacity, the capacity of the school is currently at 105%. In the new boundary, it'll go down to about 50 or 60%, which, like I said, is a significant impact. It honestly has me very concerned. Callum is currently a very strong and thriving school, and I want the board and the OPS staff to just be aware of this issue so that it gets the proper engagement, to look for creative solutions that we can keep Callum strong and increase its attendance. I've spoken briefly with Ms. Melissa Comine, Callum's ED, and I hope to continue talking with her, but I want it to be known that this neighborhood cares about what happens to Callum, and we want to be supportive of any initiatives that could help Callum into the future. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Next up is Lisa Carlson and on deck is Chris Johnson.
Lisa Carlson, C-A-R-L-S-O-N, address is 6010 North 166th Street. I am a parent of two children, and if you can tell by my address, we don't actually live in the district, we opt in. It's partly because I do believe in this district, and I'm not giving up. I had a lot of notes here and I've kind of changed direction. There's been a lot of comments that echo what I was going to say, so I'll try to not be redundant, but I can only imagine how probably disappointed all of you are that this search has ended without a superintendent. Imagine you're all asking yourself, what's next? What more can we do? And I'm sure you are, as I said, very disappointed that you have not been successful. And so I'm going to go out on a limb here and say that perhaps you felt like you just didn't have the right candidate in either Mr. Gosman or Dr. Mumeen, and you didn't want to settle, and I'm, I'm good with that, if that's what happened. I don't want you to settle either for a candidate that doesn't have everything that we need for this district. But now we need to move forward, and we need to find a way for the board to come together and take the time that you need to find a superintendent that does get 100% of your support. And you are likely going to need to buy yourself some time to do a second search, and that is where your cooperation that everybody's called for here tonight will really be necessary. First, everyone on this board needs to, or I'd hope that you would, take a giant step toward a more moderate position with a common goal. Your common goal is to find a superintendent that can best execute the strategic plan that was adopted three years ago, and to find a superintendent that believes in our vision and a mission for every student. But to do that, you will likely need to find an interim. And the World Herald today presented an excellent plan to extend Mr. Evans' contract. This would be seamless, an efficient option, and one that would not create or add to an already chaotic situation. Over the past three years, under Mr. Evans, the district started to make real progress with our strategic plan, passing a bond, updating buildings, raising test scores, and we would like to see that continue. Work together to create a stable environment for the administrators, the teachers, and the students so that they all can get back to the task of educating children while you take the time you need to complete a successful candidate search. Next, keep the OPS vision and the strategic plan at the center of what you do. It seems like everywhere we turn these days, we see political divisiveness and a failure of people to cooperate, and I wonder, how will we ever teach our children the importance of collaboration, of coming together with people who may have different opinions if as adults we can't model what that looks like? What I can't determine is whether this board is merely a reflection of how divided we are as a district, or if the division on this board is starting to create a division in our district that appears- our district that appears to grow stronger every day. The other option that I've witnessed tonight is perhaps the division is making us stronger as a district and bringing us together in hopes that you will be able to do the same. So whether it is sub-district versus sub-district, east versus west, north versus south, midtown versus west Omaha, the vision doesn't change. The vision says every student, every student, every day, prepared for success. It doesn't say just some students or just Hispanic students or just low socioeconomic students or just the west Omaha students. The way I see it, you have two choices. If you continue to argue about the best path forward, perhaps it would be best to divide up the district and allow each side to move forward as they see fit. The other option, and one that I would like to think has the most support, is to put aside your personal agendas and to rally around our common purpose, and that is serving the needs of all children in our district. The strategic plan was created and adopted after careful input from stakeholders across this community and it isn't up to any of you to change course. Your only charge is to provide appropriate board oversight-
One minute.
...and select a superintendent who can best carry out this plan. And the strategic plan states, "Our job as citizens of this community will be to hold the board accountable for following the strategic plan." So we are at a critical junction and the future of this school district rests on whether the nine of you can rise above the problems we've had up to this point. And just like the paper called for, we need stability, we need collaboration, and we need the board to model that. Extending Mark Evans' contract allows the district to have some stability right now and to continue the progress we are having while giving yourselves time to come together and search for a new superintendent as a united board. And I think we've all learned that if you can't do that, we'll never find a high-quality superintendent that our students deserve. But if you can come together, I believe that you can do it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up is Chris Johnson, followed by Kenneth Wainwright.
Good evening, Chris Johnson, J O H N S O N, 2011 North 53rd Street. I am architect and managing principal of Leo A. Daley. We've been a strong partner with OPS, especially on the current bond program on projects such as Lewis and Clark, Morton Middle School, and currently Benson High School, which we'll hear from later. Recently, however, I have some concerns on the selection process used in the recommendation of the architect engineer on the Columbian Elementary School project, which is item H-15 on tonight's agenda. As part of the Columbian selection process, OPS published the numeric scoring criteria in three parts. Part one, the written, the firm's written proposal. Part two, the firm's presentation. And part three, the firm's responses to specific interview questions. The three parts were scored for a total of 320 points. Leo A. Daley received a total of 292.75 points. The second-ranked firm received a total of 291.00 points. Leo A. Daley was the highest-ranking firm and by numeric scoring criteria, the successful firm. The RFP explicitly states that OPS will endeavor to negotiate a fee and reimbursement schedule with the successful firm. This did not happen. Leo A. Daley was never offered the opportunity to negotiate a fee with OPS. Since receiving the highest ranking, Leo A. Daley has been informed that the OPS Selection Committee will be recommending the second-ranked firm because that firm had received a slightly higher score on the written proposal, which was part one of the three-part criteria. But even more concerning, other factors undisclosed to any of the competing firms and not included as part of the published quantifiable scoring criteria. I realize by standing up here, there is some risk to Leo A. Daley for addressing these concerns, especially the fact that OPS is a large educational client within the Omaha market. But I'm more concerned that this subjective scoring procedure involving other factors creates a dangerous precedent for all future pursuits and those consultants considering submitting any services proposal. And this procedure is not in line with the intent of the published quantifiable scoring criteria. I'm asking the board for your assistance on two items. One, please reconsider the recommendation to award the Columbian Elementary Project to the second-ranked team and in turn, recommend that the selection committee endeavor to negotiate a fee with the highest-ranked firm. And secondly, for future RFPs, that OPS clearly identify and publish its quantifiable scoring criteria, including any other factors, to be included in that scoring. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I apologize, I did not read correctly earlier. The next speaker is Kenetta Wainwright. And on deck is Larry Storer.
Thank you for making that correction. I'm sure everybody would have figured it out when I got to the podium. My name's Kenetta Wainwright. It's K E N N E T T A. Last name, W A I N W R I G H T. I live at 1025 Leavenworth Street. I was going to start off with my first thought, but I'll make it my last out of respect for you all. I'm a community member and I'm a former parent. I don't have to be here. I care, so I'm here. I come out to every single superintendent search after our superintendent retired in 2011, when my daughter graduated, my last of four children. So I came out when Mark Evans was chosen. I actually picked him. Thank you for your service, sir. I understand your need to leave and many regrets for that. However, I did want to say, I'm also an alumni. I went to Belvedere, I went to McMillan, and I went to Omaha North when it was great. And my children went to schools here as well. And it was a great, great school district when they were here. Since then, it has kind of went downhill and Mr. Evans had been bringing it uphill. I disagree with anybody from the district being superintendent. I think you do need somebody outside of the district. And I think you had two very respectable and very great candidates in Mr. Guzman, excuse me, Dr. Guzman and Dr. Muman. I picked Dr. Muman because he was tech-savvy and he just seemed very energetic and youthful. But Dr. Guzman would have been a wonderful candidate as well. Either one, I didn't really care. But it seems like a waste of time for me to be here tonight when you had three other pressing issues that came before you tonight that seemed very wonderful in projects and in priority. We should not be here discussing any of this because you guys couldn't come to a decision. It's very disappointing for me. I am just a member of the community. I represent no one. I got a phone call from my daughter who saw from her boyfriend's news release that you all couldn't make a decision and two candidates dropped out. He's 25 years old, he's a graduate from Benson. She is 24, she is a graduate from Benson. It went through their little Benson High School alumni feed that you guys are incompetent. Now, those are youth, they're half my age, yet I share their same opinion. I am upset with you. I came out to tell you I'm upset with you. And if you all get replaced this year, I would be happy because one of the things about leadership is that you all should be able, even if it's in the final hour, to be able to come to a decision reasonably and respectfully. And we should not know about what happened in the background. We should not know anything about what your discussions were. I don't know how the search committee told our candidates. That's a problem. Maybe you should fire the search committee too. I'm on board with the first speaker and the second speaker. They made excellent points and I almost didn't come up because they were so great in how they presented their opinions to you all. But then I just kept being mad sitting there. And I wanted you to understand that-
One minute.
-there are people in the community that are mad at you that have no more kids in the school system. You have publicly embarrassed us and we are nationally disgraced. Think about that and think about your positions because I'm going to think about that when I vote again. Thank you and I'm sorry to talk to you that way, but I think you needed it.
Thirty seconds.
Mark Evans, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Our next speaker is Larry Storer and actually, we, so it is now 7:48 pursuant to policy 8346. We traditionally limit public comment to one hour. If there are any board members who would like to make any type of motions, we have...
Make a motion to let everyone speak?
How about one minute?
We have five, I'm sorry, we have, let me recount. We have six speakers remaining, so if anyone would like to make a motion to, there are several options. You can exhaust the speakers list and let everyone who is remaining speak, or you can set a specific amount of time. And Mr. Pearlman, now.
I move to allow all the speakers their five-minute time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Pearlman, a second by Ms. Ryan to exhaust our speakers list. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, Ms. Yow, I heard her first. Okay, seeing no discussion, Mr. Ray, roll call, please.
Got it.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Palermo.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
No.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ada.
All right, motion carried. So our next speaker is Larry Storer and on deck will be Jay Klein.
Thank you. Name is Larry Storer, S T O R E R, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. That young lady just spoke the inner feelings, I think, of most of us. Taxpayers. I've paid taxes since 1971, property taxes, state income and federal, sales tax, and I'm very disappointed also. Our founding fathers didn't lay out your job for you. They said that was left to us, it's left to you to run this school district, nobody else. But I keep hearing rumors of outside influence in this school district and in the State House. Last Friday night, I'm watching the NET Television testimony on some Health and Human Services bills. One came up at 5 o'clock that wasn't on the agenda and it had to do with somebody that seems to have a lot of power around this state. Number one, the Sherwood Foundation, involved in OPS, it's involved in the juvenile justice system, it's involved with the state Supreme Court, and it's involved with asking for $2 million down at the State House last Friday night for a program to help our kids. Something that you yourselves just failed on, but a lot of our teachers have failed on. If we have to hire outside organizations to come in and tell us and identify that we have a problem with kids, their behavior, and we have kids with mental health problems, and we want every school district to identify 20 kids that need help, isn't that an infringement on personal freedoms? I remember when my grandson was little, there was a program, the federal government said you should be able to find and identify kids that need help and guide them to that help. They didn't say hire an outside organization for $20 million to do that. They didn't tell you to make those decisions yourself. So I'd like you to ask, you know, one lady said, or one person here said, "You can appoint somebody." Well, why not have these foundations such as Sherwood, Kids Connect, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, come out of the shadows and take your chairs? Let them run Mark Evans' job. You can sit and listen because they're probably telling you what to do anyway. Thank you.
All right, next up is Jay Klein and on deck will be Terry Crawford.
My name is Jay Klein, K L I N E, on 2036 North 48th Avenue. And just want to thank you guys for giving us some extra time to exhaust all the speakers here tonight. I represent one of the advisory boards at Benson High School, the Construction and Design Academy. And I have some of my peers that represent the Health Professions and Business and Entrepreneurship Academy as well. And as the three advisory boards that are represented here tonight and provide guidance and direction for the operation of the Career Academy programs at Benson High School, over the last two years, I, along with my fellow board members, have worked very closely with the Benson staff to stand up and implement a career-based curriculum at Benson. While we feel that we have made significant progress, there remains a lot of work to do. With the recent departure of Principal Harkins and the search for her replacement underway, it's imperative that we ensure continuity and sustainability for our career academies in the transition. As we understand it, the traditional process of evaluating candidates includes meeting with OPS Tac, OPS Board members, community members, and school staff. With the students' best interests in mind, we respectfully request that the advisory board members be included in the process to help better ensure the momentum of implementing career-based education at Benson High School is uninterrupted. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is Terry Crawford and on deck is Reverend Portia Cabot.
Good evening. My name is Terry Crawford. It's T E R R I C R A W F O R D, 3861 Farnham Street. I am a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. Although I'm not here to speak for the sorority, I am here in that capacity as a member of the sorority. We have lots of educators that are part of our sorority, locally, nationally, and internationally. And yes, we vote. Two things. LB 595, and if you're not familiar with it, you should become very familiar with it. LB 595 was introduced in this legislative session and basically it says, in pertinent part, that if a student exhibits destructive behavior towards school property, a teacher or administrator may use physical restraint to subdue such student until such student ceases the destructive behavior or the student is removed from the classroom. This was concerning to me because I am an attorney by profession. I have seen a video that has gone viral where a young lady who was 13 years old in the classroom was considered to be destructive because she refused to put away her cellphone. The resource officer in that classroom picked up the desk with the young lady and slammed her to the ground. They had something very similar in that school district. This was not in Nebraska, but they had something very similar in that school district that would disallow any action by any parent, by any concerned person, any action against any administrator or against that resource officer in that school. This could happen in Nebraska. Now, Mark Evans said when we started this whole process that there are some wonderful things that are going on in OPS schools, and I agree. I attended OPS school. My mother was one of the first Black cheerleaders at Central High School. I attended high school in this very building. My children, two adult sons that I love very much, attended OPS school and now I have grandchildren that attend OPS. I know that there are some wonderful things that are going in OPS, but there are also some not-so-wonderful things that we don't talk about very often. One of those is that we know that students of color are 10 times as likely nationally to be suspended, disciplined, and expelled. And Omaha Public Schools aligns very closely with those numbers. We also know that students of color are seven times more likely to be referred to the juvenile justice system for something that in my day would have been considered a playground fight or a playground dispute. Now we are referring them to the juvenile justice system. LB 595 would open up the floodgates for more of that to happen in- LB 595 would open up the floodgates for more of that to happen in Omaha Public Schools. I would love to be able to have a discussion with each of you individually or collectively as to where you stand on LB 595. I think it's important for everyone in this room, everyone in my sorority, and everyone in this state to know where you stand on LB 595. That's the first issue. The second issue then is on this superintendent search. Now, as I understand it, although I, like many other people in this room, was not privy to the inner workings as to what happened, and maybe that's not the biggest issue we need to address, but what we do need to address is that we had some very qualified, very credentialed individuals that submitted their information for us to consider at OPS. That was done. We had three very qualified candidates. The first who dropped out of the race, maybe she had her reasons that we were not privy to. The other two came as a shock to many of us as that bomb fell this weekend and that information came out publicly. One of the things I would like to know is how exactly did we get here?
One minute.
What I read was that, Dr. Guzman said that we were informed that there was not significant support for either one of us from the board. Other information that I read, have not been able to verify, but I'm sure everyone else read it as well, is that it is evident that neither of us have engendered such support with the Omaha Public School Board of Education. Those came from the candidates, and I would really like to know again, either individually or collectively.
Thirty seconds.
How did we get there? Those are all my comments. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Next up is Reverend Portia Cavitt, followed by Dawn Kreipah.
Good evening, Reverend Portia Cavitt, C.A.V.I.T.T., 1819 North 115 Plaza Apartment 3209. As a foster parent, a community leader, and a volunteer, I stand before you and just want to make some statements and then close up on a positive note. Want you to know that everything done in secret will indeed come to light. Want you to likewise know that in order to be an effective school board, you have to be one. And whatever the reason is, if you are part of the problem, you need to remove yourself from this board and step down so that we can get about doing the work. You have more than the stakeholders of OEA, you have the stakeholders of the 52,000 students that you are supposed to represent, that you are speaking on behalf of them as well as their parents and the community. And so as we stand tonight, want to make sure that you are not allowing your personal agenda nor outside influence to consider which way you are going to vote. If this is a non-paid position, you are working very hard as a volunteer, so you must be getting paid in some other kind of manner, and you need to stop it right now because it will come out in the end. You have been given three names tonight, no offense, Mr. Evans, but as a lame duck superintendent at this point, the same way everyone talked about the president when he was on his way out, you can't even consider that. As it relates to the other names that were given, Dr. Kirberg is more of an intellectual, has worked on the curriculum side, and then as Dr. Freysen, who has that personal, been there, done that, has been a parent, raised two children, they graduated from OPS, they are teachers, they are serving, that I need you to make sure that you are considering those constituents that you have in this district, that you are representing, the students, the parents, the teachers, as well as the community. So I stand before you tonight, I don't need all of my five minutes. Search your heart and know that we're coming after you and the secret will be revealed. Make sure you vote for the right person.
Thank you. Next up is Dawn Kreipah and on deck is Terri Wood.
Wow, thanks off to all of you out here, it's awesome. Hi, I'm Dawn Kreipah, C.R.I.P.A.S. and Paul E., as for Kreipah's sake. I'm at 1932 South 47th Street, your district, Amanda, and I'm a parent of a six-year-old, six-and-a-half, almost seven, don't forget the half. I'm also an educator at UNO, and my partner, Jack has two moms, and my partner is the PTO president at Beals, so that's where I'm starting. And first, Mark Evans, I have to tell you, please go back to Kansas and just watch basketball and relax and enjoy, okay? I want to echo something that you said though, and several of you on the board have said it, what I heard tonight, is that everything is great. The students are great, the teachers are great, the leadership is great, and you know what, the students are great, but everything isn't great. If everything was great, we don't need a new superintendent. We can just forego that, but everything isn't great. And I know that you said you went out to a kindergarten class at Beals and you read to them, and how awesome is that? And I believe Shavana, you went out and you visited the schools, and I implore every single one of you to do that because you know what, you saw some great things, but let me ask you, have you ever been at a school when a kindergartner has been suspended for acting, singing like in an Eminem commercial, "I'm sexy and I know it"? Have you ever been at a kindergarten class when they've been suspended for acting like a minion, a six-year-old, a five-year-old? Have you been to a first-grade class where, again, a first grader has been suspended because he wants to rush and be in a first chair by the teacher so he can feel special when he's reading? Have you ever been to one of the schools when they have an active shooter training and a six-year-old is told to, "We're turning off the lights, you hide and you be quiet because if you don't, guess what, your day is over, you're dead." That's what your six-year-old comes home and tells you. Everything isn't great out there, okay? Have you ever been at a school where the principal, when the students come in or the parents come in to watch a Christmas show and they came in just a few minutes late or too early because the door opened up, and the principal says, "Who let the parents into my building? Push them back out, can't they read?" Or locks the door to the, all, asks the teachers to lock the door to all the classrooms because they don't want the student or the parents to go in and tell the students how great they did at their Christmas show? You need to go out, you need to put on hats and your ball caps and sunglasses, maybe some trench coats, and, well, maybe not, but go out and just look at the schools. Have you ever visited a school at lunchtime when they have just a few minutes to eat, they're slamming down their lunch, their whistles are blowing at them during lunchtime, they're being screamed at by people telling, the staff telling them, "You have five minutes to eat, you have five minutes to eat." That so often that, my child comes home, hasn't been able to eat because he's too stressed out or doesn't have time to eat, then what happens in the afternoon, they fall apart. Have you been to these schools and visited during these times or checked out some of these situat-? That's what you need to go see. So, everything isn't great. If it was, then you know what, your decision, which is not making a decision, is indecision is a decision, as my father would say. You made a decision, you made a decision not to make one. I implore you, as I would with my, with the students in my classes at UNO, to think about standpoint theory, where you know what, you have something in common, you all have something in common besides being board members, besides being elected or sitting here because you, I hope you want to, some of your faces, you know, maybe you're just tired tonight, okay? But I hope that you really take this into heart, that you have passion, that you can come together and say, "You know what, I have something in common with you so we can start on that common ground." We all know that you have students for your passion.
One minute.
Take that, join it together, and you know what, find an answer. When I came here with my partner and we listened to Dr. Moomin, we walked out of here saying, "You, we need him. Our students, our children, need him. He was a visionary, he was student-centered, he was incredible." And you thought, maybe, maybe he wouldn't stay here too long? Guess what? He said he wanted to start a family and raise his kids here. We don't raise kids in Omaha for a day, okay? So, you know what, come back together, think about it.
Thirty seconds.
Maybe reach out again, but thank you and thank you for your time, and I implore you, go out and visit the schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Terri Wood, and then our final will be Damon Benning.
Hi, I'm Terri Wood. I'm with the Shimmer Associates. It's T.E.R.R.I.W.O.D. I want to thank Omaha Public Schools and Jacobs and the principal for recommending the Shimmer Associates for the Columbian Elementary School. And we understand how frustrating it is to finish first in the balloting for the interviews that happened to Shimmer on Burke, but we understand that there's more to that than just finishing first. You know, there's other criteria for your selection cri- or process. Shimmer focuses on K-12 of elementary projects, which is evident by the results that we've had on the Gilder Project and Indian Hills that we've done for you. We have great local economic inclusion partners as part of our team for Columbia, which Dailies did not have, and we look forward to moving forward on the Columbian Project and collaborating with the district. We were fairly selected by the process and we would like to not see that change because I think it calls into question all the selections you made up to now under this process, and we just think that that would also invite others to come up in the future as part of this. We encourage you to approve our selection by the consent agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker this evening is Damon Benning.
My name is Damon Benning, and I almost don't feel right with my back to you for a living. I'm used to being under the clock and talking in a certain amount of time, but I'm also in the solutions-oriented business. I get chastised and talked about if, if all we do is gripe and complain and don't offer any viable solutions, and so I just kind of want to take a little bit of a different approach. While, for, I'm going to assume that some of the criticism that has been uttered and said was rightfully earned, but it goes across the board, and we all share a responsibility for what is to happen in this community. As I sit back and I listen, I struggle, and for two reasons. Number one, my father was Assistant Superintendent of Omaha Public Schools for 27 years. He was part of a department called Student Community Relations, and what they did was is they understood the dynamics of the importance of a strong community and how a strong community is intertwined with strong public schooling. And he taught me three things, and I'm passionate tonight because he suffers from dementia, and he's my very best friend, and there's a, I'm committed to this district. The district would not hire him. Milo Bell says, "We'll give you a job at UNO." He says, "No, I want to move. The university would employ him when the district wouldn't." So I'm emotionally invested, and I'm appalled that while a lot of us have done actions to deserve some of the criticism that we get, we ask teachers, we ask educators, we ask administrators to blank slate children, to when you come in contact with youth, that you get rid of all preconceived notions, that you lay it down, that you become an equal opportunist as an educator to blank slate the format. Yet, we've accused a lot of people of a lot of things that I'm not so sure we know about. It appears to be a bad game of telephone. As individuals, you can own that as you want, but I know three things. Number one, my dad taught me, "Bad news always beat you home," and that goes across the board. We, none of us are free or absolved of that responsibility or culpability. We have to own that as individuals. It could mean something as if you hear something out on the streets and it's part of your community and you are so for pro-education, keep the negativity and the permentation of ill will out of your mouth. I have a hard time believing that some of us are leaders and educators in our own household and we sit as though we are above reproach and incapable of learning. It's mind-boggling. And as a public district entity, someone that has grown up here, we have a fiduciary responsibility to be humanitarians, to embrace one another. We talk a lot about Maslow's hierarchy, and the first three are easy, right? The physiological, the safety, and the love and belonging. Although the love and belonging, we struggle with a little bit because we don't understand that it's unconditional. That means without restraints, without fault. It is there because it is, it's what we need. We say, "Hey, educators, make sure you go out and give that to those kids, the students, they need it." But we can't give it to one another. We can't sit down and have a regular conversation with one another and say, "Hey, Matt, how are you doing?" "Hey, Shavana, outstanding job as a principal, man. I know that you had to go through the wringer." "Hey, Matt, it was great playing with you. I know you're under fire, but hopefully you have a good day." I'm not absolving him of responsibility, but I'm letting him know that I care about him, and if he knows that I care about him, he can best serve the needs that I need to have met as an individual. That's how it works.
One minute.
The last part of the hierarchy is the esteem and the self-actualization. Sometimes I think we bring a lot of other people down to make sure that we feel better about ourselves. If that's you, hey, listen, do some self-inventory. If it's not, then I'm not talking to you. The self-actualization comes from the fact that you owe it to yourselves to want the best for yourself out of self-respect. If I'm part of the community and I'm not part of the school board, it's my responsibility to promote the goodness and the wellness of this community.
Thirty seconds.
Not to perpetuate rumors and innuendo that we have that are substantiated. If I'm part of the board, my best interest is those being others-centered, to put someone else before yourself. If I understand that two basic needs are love and respect, if I act disrespectful, you're going to treat me unlovingly. And if I feel unloved, I'm going to be disrespectful, and we go round and round and round. The more mature person has to go first. You guys get to decide who it is. Try a new approach. Don't start with being kids first.
That's time.
I love the, I love the district, and kids should go first, but talk to one another. You can't get over on kids. They know and they trust that you have each other's best interests at heart. If that happens, it's easy, you get the trickle-down effect, and it doesn't have anything to do with Reaganomics.
That's time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And again, thank you to everyone who came out tonight. I know there are a lot of intense emotions and feelings that we're all going through, and I think a little bit later in our agenda, as a board, we're going to discuss that. So for now, we will move on to item H, which is our consent agenda. Oh, you don't all have to leave just because we went to consent agenda. Are there any abstentions to consent agenda? Mr. Scanlon?
I guess, I would just, and I don't have my computer up. What's the consent agenda item that referred to, is it H-15? I guess I'd like to pull that off and just get more information because we had some public speakers, and I think it'd be best if we, as a board, knew more from the administration side of things.
All right, so there's been a request to pull item H-15. Are there any other abstentions or items that members would like polled? And can we all check and make sure our microphones are not off when we're speaking because we're getting feedback? Okay, seeing no other abstentions or items that we want polled, roll call, please. Or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda that is before us with the removal of H-15?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Williams and a second by Mrs. Godding. Roll call, please.
Holman.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Palermo.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Godding.
Aye.
Start with motion carries. Obviously with the removal of H-15 to our action items. We will then move to item I, which is discussion and our action item. And let's do I-1B first, the proposed expansion of the Middle Level Alternative Program, since I know we have some people here to present on that.
President America, Vice President Snow, Superintendent Evans, and members of the board, this, we come before you tonight to explain to you that we are moving forward with the expansion of the Middle Level Alternative Program. We currently are at the St. Mary's site on 36th and Q. We currently are at the St. Mary's site on 36th and Q. It's called Student Success Program. It is a small site, and it currently serves 22 to 25 students, depending on the day. We found this year that it is a great need for a larger space to serve more students. We have expanded, as you well know, our middle schools to grades six through eight. And we've been talking about the expansion and making this a better alternative for our most needy middle school students that can't seem to function in a regular middle school setting. We have been in discussions with the OEA since this summer. We have viewed different sites. We thought at some point we would contract out, but that did not work out. So we're moving forward as a district to create our new middle-level alternative program. That will start at the current site in the fall of 2017, and will move to the Druid Hill Building second semester that will give us more space to serve more students. We spoke to the staff of the current SSP program this afternoon. They are aware of this move forward. We have worked with middle school principals. We've had discussions with the OEA. We have worked with schoolhouse planning to see what would need to be done to create a viable space for these students. And after tonight, we're going to start talking with teachers and administrators to shape the program for our new middle school program. And so this presentation serves as an information only to tell you what our plans are moving forward. I have Amy Williams, who is the current supervisor of alternative education for the Omaha Public Schools, and Dr. Lisa Sterba, who did serve as the program director for the Wilson Alternative School. I don't know how many years ago was it, Lisa? It's been a while. So I consider her one of the experts in the field, and she's been instrumental in being a great resource to us as we talk about what how many staff we'll need, what types of staff we'll need. So we're here to answer any questions, and if you have any questions, but we wanted to let you know that we are moving forward with our plans.
All right, thank you. Are there board questions? Mr. Snow.
Thank you. So just the update at the old Druid Hill, that's not current bond money, correct?
Pardon me?
The update that will happen at the old Druid at the new location.
Yes.
Which is Druid Hill, that's not used out of the bond money, correct? Or is that additional?
Mark Warner Key would have the answers to. Is he here? No.
I mean, I know at the bottom it says you guys will discuss that later date.
No, no.
If that's fine, if we can get information.
No.
It's not.
No.
Operations money. It's part of the current ongoing maintenance budget.
Perfect. Would you be able to get that to us before it comes up?
The budget for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have that. I can get that to you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Godding.
So I know when we were in there, and I'm sorry, I am so sick. So if I haven't gone back to people this week. I finished my Tamiflu last night. I promised not to breathe on anybody closely, but I'm a little bit struggling with my voice. When we were going through the interview process, one of the candidates, Dr. Stavum from Lincoln, spoke to us about what they're doing with alternative, specifically elementary and middle, and some of the creative approaches that they've taken, including wearing uniforms and all that sort of thing. I just wondered if there would be an opportunity for us to visit the site in Lincoln and just get a look at what they're doing and see if there's anything we could add to what we would be doing here. They are using staff from Lincoln Public Schools. They hired an outside consultant who on a three-year contract, I think, to oversee, but that was a supervisory position, so and that's coming close to an end, I think. So I was just curious if there's any way that we could maybe take a look at what they're doing. It sounds like they've been at it for three years, both at the elementary and the middle level.
And I think that would be a great field trip for us to go. When we get our committee together, we certainly can take the drive down to Lincoln. Why reinvent the wheel if it's already working? Yep.
Hey, any other board members have questions? All right, if not, thank you all for coming, and we'll look forward to wait. I didn't see you put your hand up. I'm sorry. Ms. Williams.
It's fine. I just can you Pam, can you elaborate a little bit more on the collaboration with OEA?
I we had asked President Donovan to give us names because she indicated that there were members of the organization that were quite interested in being part of the creation of this middle-level alternative program. She did provide a list of names for me, which we have not contacted yet. We wanted to wait till we gave this information item to the board. So following tonight, we will be gathering these people together along with anyone else from any of the other schools that might be interested in serving on the committee for this program, because I do know there's a lot of people out there that are interested in the expansion of this program.
Thank you, and I'll look forward to your updates. And I also just wanted to say, give my appreciation to OEA for collaborating and coming to the table and working with you on this. I think that's very important for us moving forward.
I agree. Thank you.
Ms. Yotek, what I was going to ask. So I'll say thank you, and I'm glad that this I think this is going to be a good example of we've heard about the example of us working together with our teachers as it related to the early childhood testing and observation issue. And I'm hopeful that this can be another good example that comes back to the board as a point of collaboration between all of us.
We will make you proud.
All right, we will move back to and for board members' information, if you are not using autopilot in e-meetings, you will need to refresh your system to have the item that was moved off of consent agenda show up in the action items, just so that you're all aware of that. We will go back to committees of the board update, and I'm going to go in a slightly different order because I think it makes sense for accountability to go last since their report is basically one of our action items. So Budget and Audit Committee.
Okay. We met a bit ago. I can't quite remember what the day was. But we will be meeting again shortly. So what we're taking a look at is where we're at funding-wise, which we don't have an idea yet, just because the numbers haven't started to come in, it's my understanding from Mrs. Kenoki from the assessor's office yet. But one of the things we'll be trying to figure out is we've talked about budget development parameters. So we know that negotiated contracts in general are going up about three and a half percent. We are hoping that we will see some increase in valuation as well from the district side. We talked a bit about preliminary expenditure increases and what those look like. We also talked about opportunities for the internal auditor to maybe take a look at a few different areas. And so I know Mrs. Kenoki is going to come back and share some of that with us as far as what that might look like. We talked a little bit about TIF as well, because we know that there's a lot of TIF in OPS. And some of those items or some of those properties will be coming back onto the property tax rolls. So for a clear understanding for everybody, and I want to make sure, because this was new information to me, so I think it's important for board members to know, or actually, Ms. American, I kind of learned this information through asking a legislative aide the question when we were in Lincoln. But what happens with TIF is the property goes off of our records, but what we get paid for, what we still collect is the original property value that was on there. So let's say a property goes off and it was valued at $100,000, and it's now had lots of great construction, and now it's valued at $1 million. The $900,000 goes into the TIF fund. The $100,000 property tax portion goes to OPS. So even when we pass a bond, that six cents doesn't all go to us. It only goes in proportion to what increased or what the original property value was, the increase is actually going back to the developer. So we kind of took a look at what might happen over the course of time, and we are hopeful that next year about $11 million will come back onto our rolls. And in 18, $23 million, and hopefully in 19, $92 million. So we're just kind of looking to see are there going to be some opportunities for us, especially knowing that next year we will no longer be a part of the learning community, and that stability and funding will be gone from us, as well as knowing that there's still lots of discussion happening at the legislature on what our potential funding will be. So those were some of the things we talked about. We have a policy we're going to send to the policy committee, and as soon as we get more accurate data and we're ready with assessed values, we'll be bringing that to the board. We may, you know, have a little bit longer item for Mrs. Kenoki to present as well.
All right, thank you. And I agree, it was very interesting learning how TIF works with bond issues and all of that. It was very eye-opening. I do not believe Mr. Ray has communications committee met. They have not met yet. Policy is scheduled to meet on March 21st. Did you have anything to add? Okay. Americanism Committee. Okay. Student Assignment Plan.
That's back to me. We took a look at the numbers, and I just really want to give a public thank you to Casey for I got that right, for all of his work in research on just really providing some amazing data to us. And so some of the things we're looking at are still the new student assignment plan, transportation plan this fall, what will happen with that, and actually narrowing down those families that we believe may not actually understand that they're going to be losing transportation. So I think Casey's done a great job of analyzing that data, and will I know the principals in the buildings are contacting folks, and our folks in family services, community engagement are also contacting folks. So I think he's done a great job, and I think we're feeling much better about the communication that's gone on with the student assignment plan. I also just want to share with you, and we never know until really in the summertime where all of our high school and middle school and elementary school students end up, because they choose an OPS school doesn't necessarily mean they're going to remain in OPS. But what we do know is that it's certainly apparent that we are strapped for space, and all of our high schools are really basically either at capacity or will be probably taking students only from their home attendance area, except for Benson. But even with Benson right now, there's a projection of nearly 1,400 students. We don't know where it'll end up in the end. But I think what it tells us is we're packing people into buildings pretty tightly, and so we have some real space constraint issues. But so that's one of the other things that we talked about. We'll continue to talk about the transportation plan and the communication out to families and making sure that that's well done.
Mr. Evans?
Just a couple of comments to add on to that related to the student assignment plan. I know I don't know if Travis Salas is here now. He was in the audience. They are planning on early mock routing now with the student assignment plan change, plus with some of the issues we've had with our contractor, STA, trying to get a step ahead of that. So I just wanted the board to be aware of that, that that's going to happen, and we'll come back to the board at a later date with the report. It might even be a good workshop in a month or two down the road to talk about where we're at with the mock routing, where we're at with STA drivers and all of that. We don't, as we all know, we don't want to be in the spot we were in in August of last year and finding out two weeks before the school year start, there were short bus drivers. So we want to keep the board engaged and be ahead of the curve on the student assignment plan, as well as keeping that communication going. I believe, and Mr. Ray, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this. I know you've got some of the stats, or Casey, if he's here. I think we still have 600 parents we've heard nothing from that we've been trying to contact. So we know, and 600 is not huge when you consider 52,000 students, but still it's 600 folks that we need to engage and get some communication with. We've sent letters, phone calls, emails, but we're going to keep working on that 600 number as well. Thank you.
All right. Legislative Committee meets every Friday, and we'll have an update if needed under our action items. Are there any construction manager at risk? Mr. Pullman?
I just wanted to briefly comment on the legislative update.
Okay.
If I can do that. Just to respond, I don't know if she's still here, but whoever had a concern about the I wrote it down, the LB-595. I just do want to speak to that just briefly. We talked about it in our committee meeting. Ironically, I actually presented that same cell phone scenario as something that I'm concerned about. I myself, I oppose that bill. I think it's a very reckless, dangerous bill. All it does, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were I thought we were at that.
We're in the committee updates, and then we do have a full legislative update.
I'm in the wrong place in my computer. Then I can wait.
Okay.
No, it's fine.
Yes.
I confused action items with information items, so I apologize.
No, no worries.
Rookie mistake. I'll come back to that.
All right. Do we have a construction manager, any construction manager at risk updates? Okay, is there any CIBOC update?
I believe we meet on Wednesday, so everything's going well, on time, under budget.
And we appreciate that. Code of Conduct Committee.
We met last month, and we discussed restorative justice, and it was kind of an information meeting for the committee. We are working on rescheduling our next meeting because school board members will be out of town in Denver, I believe. And so if we don't get that rescheduled, then we'll just go to our April meeting.
All right, thank you. So then, Mr. Scanlon, you were out. We skipped over accountability because I think it flows naturally into our first action item, which is I-2A, which was recommendation of the Accountability Committee. First, I do, as board president, have some words I wanted to share, and then I think Mr. Scanlon is going to report on behalf of the Accountability Committee, if I'm correct. Okay. So really, before we get started talking about the superintendent search, I said I have a few comments. As I acknowledged earlier, there are a lot of emotions being felt by our parents, our staff, our students and teachers, our whole our board and our whole community about our search for a new superintendent. That includes people who are angry, annoyed, disappointed, and all of that impacts our staff morale. It impacts our students. It impacts our families. The selection of a new superintendent is the single most important decision we will collectively make ever as a board. I believe that, and I hope everyone here shares that same belief. It's a decision that it requires more than just a simple majority of us. It requires consensus from our board. That's something that I believe we've all stated since we began this process, that we need a superintendent figure that the board unites around, that the community arites and unites around to bring that consensus. Over the past few weeks, it has become clear to me that there was not consensus amongst our board, our parents, our staff, and even among our community, based on the feedback that we were receiving about who the best candidate was to lead our district. And last Friday, the Accountability Committee met and agreed with that conclusion. Based on that, on Saturday morning, I shared with our search firm that information, and they felt it was appropriate to share that information with the candidates, that the board was lacking a consensus and clear vision. I want to be clear to the entire community that we don't have an expectation that we will have a permanent superintendent in place for the coming school year, but we will have someone in that role. That means we do need to place an interim. This is not something we want to rush and have a hurried search to have an official permanent superintendent in place on July 1st. Rushing the process would be a disservice to our community. I've asked the Accountability Committee to meet tomorrow, and they will be tasked with making recommendations to the full board on how to proceed with respect to an interim no later than April 3rd. If they have a recommendation sooner than that, we will be calling a special meeting to review and receive and then vote on that recommendation. Once the full board has determined how to proceed with the interim selection process, we can focus on evaluating this most recent selection process. we can focus on evaluating this most recent selection process, working to improve it, and working to ensure that our next process is not only better, but yields a candidate and candidates that our entire community strongly rallies around. So I encourage everyone, especially our Board members, to take some time individually on your own, think about your thoughts, and those are the communities you represent, so that you can share your feelings on things that went well with the search, things that didn't go so well, ideas you have for moving forward, and share that with the Accountability Committee in the next few months. I know, as fellow Board members, that there may be temptation to point fingers, and that may release some tension and make us feel better, but it doesn't solve problems. I think things that we say when we're feeling a lot of anger or frustration, we sometimes look back in regret. And that's, I think I acknowledge we're all frustrated, and that's not what we want to do. We don't want to point fingers and point blame. We need to come together and work together. This is, this is our responsibility. It's our responsibility to work together and get this right for our students and our staff members, who are working every day to make our district the best, not just the best urban public school district in the country, but the best public school district in our country. And I believe Mr. Scanlon has the accountability report.
Yes, just for transparency purposes, and I understand the public's frustration at times that, you know, we don't find out things as timely as we'd like, but we had just had an Accountability Meeting on Friday, and as Lacy stated, we have four Board members on that committee, or on that, yeah, on that committee. And what we had looked at is, is I believe all nine of us want to have the next superintendent come in, and we want ideally to have a 9-0 vote. We want to have everybody in agreement with who the next superintendent should be. And even if it's not nine, it's not healthy in the Accountability Committee's opinion to bring a superintendent in, that it would be a five to four vote, or it would not be a vote that would bring a candidate in, and then it would have to be played out in public. So that discussion was held on Friday with the Accountability Committee. And at the beginning of the meeting, we had four Board members that agreed that we did not have a candidate that was, that could kind of be the mending superintendent. And so, at that point in time, it was discussed that, yes, I think we should reopen the superintendent search, and that was at that point in time, four candid, or four Board members that agreed with that. Unfortunately, as we discussed some next steps, you know, there's some disagreements, but we had, at the end of the meeting, we had a vote, and it was to, we were going to bring a recommendation to this school Board that we leave the superintendent search open, and that's our only recommend, or that was going to be our only recommendation. We're going to look for feedback from the Board to see how the school Board would like to proceed as far as next steps. That was voted on at the end of the meeting with a three to zero vote, with one Board member absent. So that's the, kind of the summary of the meeting. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
Okay. And Board members with questions, I just want to let you know, to be fair to everybody, I want to give everyone the opportunity to speak at least once, before individuals are recognized to speak multiple times. So just to lay that out first. I saw Ms. Williams first, and then Mr. Pearlman.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna try to group mine together and go at one time. First, can you remind us who currently sits on the Accountability Committee?
The Accountability Committee is Vinnie, Mark, Lacy, and myself.
So, I'm just, can you go last name, not first name? I'm sorry.
Vinnie Palermo, Mark Snow, Lacy America, and Matt Scanlon.
Secondly, I just have a couple comments. As all of you, we've been inundated with comments, good, bad, indifferent texts, particularly in the past three days. My phone is kind of my worst enemy right now, because it won't stop ringing and dinging and chiming and notifying me that the community is quite honestly in an uproar right now. And so I just want to bring up two points. And with all due respect to everyone, the disservice to our community is not bringing this conversation to the community, and 13, I believe, of our 22 speakers today talked about, referenced that in some point. This conversation should have come to the full Board, and I truly feel that way. We should have had this conversation together in our public meeting. It is a meeting, it's our meeting in public, and we should have had this conversation in public, so that there is some level of transparency. The number one complaint I heard just today alone was there is a lack of transparency. And, you know, it is, it's right to, it is right for us to work together, but it's also right for us to work together on, this is our most important job that we have. And everybody that came, I can't disagree with them, even when on certain aspects, I can't disagree with them, because they are correct. We are appointed by our constituents, and our constituents spoke loud and clear, regardless of what your reason was, or what any of our reasons were. We had a due diligence to our constituents, to our staff, and to our students first and foremost. And right now, I'm going to say it, that I'm ashamed right now. I really am. Because I've seen our community come out more for our superintendent search, because that's what they're supposed to do. They took time off of work. They came out, hour after hour after hour. We took time off of work to meet with candidates and to come and watch the sessions. And the fact that I find out at an NASB meeting, in Lincoln, in another role that I served to represent this district, that's the only conversation that I can have. Not focusing on my family, not focusing on other areas that I'm looking forward to, going to a national conference, hopefully to represent us in another, on another Board, which would be huge for us. Colleagues from out of state, out across this country have called, because they're watching what's happening, and I am extremely embarrassed right now to be the laughing stock of the education community, and that, we should all be embarrassed, and we should all be ashamed, regardless of what our reasons were. But first and foremost, this conversation that happened on Saturday and Friday, and however that played out, that conversation should have happened right here at this table with our community, so they can see and hear what we all had to say. And for that, I am disappointed, and I'm ashamed. And I sit here with you as colleagues, so I have to bear my burden of that, or my portion of that burden, but I am ashamed. This is the one time in four years that I've felt this way, and it's really sad, because it's, and it's really sad for our students who look up to us. We have students that come all the time. We had students come to Lincoln to talk about charters and talk about how great our system is, and then the next day, it all falls apart. And so again, I just, I'm ashamed at this juncture, and as we move forward, I hope that every one of us are more transparent with our decisions and have more conversations with our constituents, because really, they're, they are the ones who put us here. It's not anyone else, it's not any behind-the-scenes hierarchy, it's not positions or roles, it's our community that votes us in, and that is what we're supposed to do. And again, today, it's just, and I don't mean to offend anybody, but I'm ashamed right now, and I hope that we can get past this, but I promised my constituents and the community that I represent that I would come here and speak truth, because that's what they know that I do, and today, I am ashamed.
All right, Mr. Pearlman?
I want to echo what Ms. Williams has said. You know, the statement was made that we, that this consulting firm made a decision, or I'm sorry, the, what was said by you, Ms. America, was that this consulting firm felt it necessary to share it with the candidates. Well, why did we feel it necessary to share it with the consulting firm? Nobody asked, actually, somebody did ask me. And we didn't, you know, there was no vote taken on whether or not we told this consulting committee to act. This all happens at the Board table. And I feel like the rug was pulled out from underneath us. We didn't, I mean, it's clear what happened. There might have been a vote to, here's the ironic thing that I've been thinking about. We agreed unanimously to just take a step back and reevaluate where we were at in the search. But for some reason, that had to take place by a committee, and that's never been explained. What, I agree that there was a unanimous vote that we were kind of deadlocked, but nobody, there was no discussion about what to do next. That's what was supposed to happen here. We had three more days, we were here to discuss the situation. The committee can't act for the whole Board, and I'll just leave it at that.
And I would just say, to clarify, there was no direction. The search firm was not told, they had to call the candidates, the search firm was not told that the candidates had to drop out. All we, as a committee decided that we needed to, it was the responsible thing to do, to inform the search, that our search firm, that we did not have a Board consensus.
What was the purpose of that?
To let them know, so they're updated on the process. Dr. Pearlman?
I would like to say, also share the same sentiments as Ms. Yeo and Ben on this, because I think that it should have been a decision that was put forth in front of all of us. And, I mean, I shared with you yesterday, Lacy, while talking, that right now, any type of trust or honor that they had in our school Board, it's completely gone. And the work that we have to do to try to win back our community's trust, all of our stakeholders' trust, is going to be a long journey ahead. And I completely feel and understand and share the very same sentiments as most of what was said tonight by all of our stakeholders that have spoken, as well as our school Board members. And, I mean, I cannot tell you how many people, like Ms. Yeo said, that say, why did you take this job? I can't believe you want to be a part of the Board. And, I mean, I'm here because I want to do the right thing, and I want to have a positive impact on what happens with our district and what happens with our children. But I feel that there are some things that are done behind closed doors that, in my opinion, and maybe I'm just a novice in this, in the school Board and how everything is run, but to me, my opinion is that that decision should have been something that should have been brought to the entire Board before the decision was made. I know that, and I wanted to get clarification on what you said, Matt, what was supposed to be brought to the Board? I know you said that there was a discussion, so what was supposed to be exactly brought to the Board?
What was going to be brought to the Board was a recommendation that the Accountability Committee recommended that the superintendent search remain open, and that we, you know, that the Accountability Committee would request further guidance from the full Board on how to proceed, because of the fact that it was, it was believed that there was no candidate that we could get a full consensus on. And by full consensus, I just mean more than a, you know, a barely passing five to four vote. We wanted to, we felt that the Accountability Committee felt that in order to do what's best for the school district, we would like to see, you know, a seven to two, eight to one, nine to zero vote to move forward.
So then how come we didn't get that opportunity to do so then?
There were some concerns that we didn't want to have negative comments put out there for candidates that, you know, as if a motion were to be made, then you'd have Board members stating reasons why they did not support that candidate, and we did not feel that that was in the best interest of those candidates, because they might be looking to get employment otherwhere, in other districts, or they might reapply for our school district, and to have them kind of put those negative potential comments put out there. We did not think that was fair for the candidates.
Okay, thank you. Did you have additional questions? Okay, other Board members who haven't spoken yet? Mr. Snow?
I sit on the Accountability Committee. Going into this meeting, there was, I would say in my gut feeling, that it wasn't going to go well. And as we proceeded in the meeting, just my take on it, I think, I believe, just to be transparent, we got sidetracked, and I left the meeting early. So I did not stay for the entire meeting, because of a disagreement in the meeting. However, one of the things that I would say is that, as a Board, I think when we initially started this search, I talked about how, when we started to have our bumps in the road with, in my opinion, with the search firm, that it should be changed, that as we got closer to this deadline, that I knew that there would be an issue if we waited all the way to the end. I did not know that at the end, that what was directed to the search firm, and I did not know that the search firm acted on their own. So, I just want to put my piece out there as well, and I'll take any questions if you have for me.
So I think we've, sorry. I think it wasn't the most beautiful process that we all would have wanted to have gone through. And I think what we learned through the process is that there are things we could have done better, and we certainly didn't handle it all perfectly, right? But what we do know, and what I know, is that we've got 52,000 kids, that we need to find the very best candidate who can rally around this entire district, north to south, east to west, and provide the type of environment and leadership that every single student deserves. And so, I would agree very much with Mr. Scanlon, in that I think it would be inappropriate for us to come here and make negative comments, potentially, about candidates, whether it's things we've read, learned, researched, that would potentially hurt them in their careers, where they're at, or in any additional opportunities they would be applying for. So I think that, I think that what happened ended up being respectful of the candidates. I think that what we have to do now is not spend a whole lot of time in the rearview mirror and look out the windshield and figure out where are we going, so we don't run into the next thing accidentally, because we're paying, we're spending too much time looking backwards. So I think, I think one of the things, we've learned a lot through the process, and I think one of the things we learned is it's hard. It's very hard to find that perfect candidate for a large urban school district that encompasses urban and suburban areas. And we knew that in the very beginning, when we started the RFP process with the search firm. So I think that that's part of the process now that we need to take a look at, is how we go about that, how we go about finding the next leader for our students in the interim period, who that's going to be. And I think that, I think that we've aired out some of our differences tonight, and hopefully, we can move forward and really recognize how to provide that level of confidence to our community. So, I think that one of the things that happens, especially in Omaha, Nebraska, is we're the only urban large district in the state, and I think what many may not know is that oftentimes, it takes more than one search for a large urban school district. Sometimes it just doesn't work out the first time, and this isn't the first time that we've had an interim. So, I think we need to all be reminded of that as well. So I think we need to all be reminded of that as well. So with that, I appreciate all of you. I appreciate the views that each person has had, and I hope that we can move forward together well.
Ms. Ryan.
I just have kind of a little bit to add because I agree with Ms. Williams and Holman and Mr. Pearlman, sorry, I'm combining the names. But I think that this is a lesson that we definitely can learn from in slowing down and being very purposeful in what we're doing and prioritizing the things that are on our plate as a district, and then really working on us as a board. So continuing to figure out some of our differences and how we can come together because that is what's needed. And I guess that's kind of all I have to say.
All right, Mr. Holman.
Just for clarity's sake, because I've been asked dozens of times over the weekend about what happened, we've heard, I think, from Ms. Gotti, Mr. Scanlon, and Mr. Snow that there was no direction given to the search firm to really do anything. We were just telling them. How do we reconcile that with the numerous comments that were made here that we didn't, we didn't want to have this discussion tonight because we wanted to avoid any potentially harmful statements of them? I guess, that's my first question, and I guess I'll just end it with a couple of comments. I heard a lot that we need to have a unified voice on whoever we're going to select for our next superintendent, needs to be 9-0. I'll tell you right now, you can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and that's what we're doing here. We need to find the best solution, and that's actually, I think, in large degree, what caused this problem, is because there's this search of finding the perfect solution to everything. And everyone here does have good intentions, but we're not going to have perfect solutions to everything. We need to discuss these things and have a dialogue so we can reach a consensus as a full board, when this is really like one of the major things that a board does, one of the very few that we do as a group, as a board. And so again, I think it's ironic that we all agreed to take a step back, and there was not a consensus on a candidate, but we just never had that opportunity to present that in a public way. So, I do, I'd love to hear an answer to that question, though.
So can you repeat the question again for us?
Three people have said that there was no direction given to the search firm. We just told them there was no consensus, and all of a sudden, they shared that with the candidates, and then the candidates withdrew. How do we reconcile that with this multiple people here tonight saying that we don't, you know, we, if I'm understanding it right, we wanted to end the search because we didn't want to have that discussion publicly that might damage someone's reputation, which, by the way, aren't mutually inclusive. We didn't have to badmouth anyone to say that we were going to continue the search. I mean, that's, to me, that's a red herring. I mean, we could have just said that we want to go in a different direction.
So I think that there are two different things. So the reason the Accountability Committee, if I can speak to this, Mr. Scanlon, since you were speaking on behalf of the committee, the reason they were making that recommendation, what we're going to make that recommendation was so that we didn't have someone make a motion for a specific candidate, people speak in favor of that person, and then other people speak negatively about that person, knowing that person may not get a passing, may not get a majority vote even of the committee, or of the board, and then have potentially the same thing happen for another candidate. That's why the Accountability Committee was making the recommendation that we not make a motion for a specific candidate, that we take the recommendation of the committee to keep the search open and look at other options we had for moving forward. You're correct, we did not direct the search firm on what they had to do. We let them know that it did not look like there was board consensus. It doesn't surprise me that they would share that because that's their responsibility. As a search firm, their responsibility is to keep the board updated on how the candidates are feeling, if the candidates have questions they want the district to ask. It's also their responsibility to keep the candidates updated on questions the board has, questions that they're hearing and feelings that they're getting. So it doesn't surprise me that they would relay the information, but they were not specifically directed or required to relay that information. Sorry, Mr. Snow.
The final thing I would say, it's just my personal opinion, we all, in my opinion, I would say the search firm did not do their job well. Therefore, our board should not, when we go for an interim or for the next superintendent, not work with the search firm at all. I think the community showed up, our teachers and our principals, and they brought up two amazing, great candidates for an interim, as well as possibly being the next superintendent of Omaha Public Schools. I think one of the things that we need more than anything is someone that can unite not just our board, but unite our community, because I will agree, we dropped the ball on this as a board, but I think what we can do to rectify that is bring someone that can unite our community, unite our teachers, unite our union, and unite our board members to help lead our district with 52,000 kids. And I believe we can do that. And I think we can do that starting tomorrow, to start having these conversations with our community. One of the things that's really interesting on this is how that committee's recommendation kind of got out of control. Another thing I would say is, for the next process, is to include every board member in that process, and to not have it under committee, but to call the superintendent's search committee, and have various board members on that committee and a chain of command on how we communicate with each other, how do we communicate with our unions, how do we communicate with our teachers and our parents that are engaged all the time. Ms. Williams, I didn't want you to be sitting in a meeting and get a phone call about what was happening. I didn't want a board member watching anything on TV and seeing the information fall down. So on that, I think moving forward, our best step is communication and starting this process, and I think we don't need to look any further. We have candidates right here. We have candidates that our community has brought up in front of us, and I think what we need to do is, as individual board members, is to find out which candidate are we ready to help lead our district. And I think the community has spoken already. So thank you.
All right, Ms. Williams.
So I just have a question, or maybe a task of the Accountability Committee. And, Mr. Snow, you addressed, you know, getting everyone engaged, but I just want to know, how are you going to reengage a community that just spent all their time engaging with us? And quite honestly, I will say, from my purview, our community spoke loud and clear. There's not a social media site, there's not a behind-the-scenes conversation that, quite honestly, you heard what the community wanted, it just wasn't listened to or heard. And quite honestly, I'm curious, how do we reengage a community that we have disappointed? How do we reengage with people that are adamant that, you know what, I'm done? How do you reengage that person? And I don't even want an answer. It's some food for thought. Because now, we are going to all have to do time and a half on top of a job that we don't get paid for. As a single parent, I'm struggling to be present for my daughter's senior year because this board, this current board, has stretched me thin. But I still show up. I love what I do for a living. I work with students in OPS, specifically OPS students, every day. I could name child after child after child, and school after school, whether they're my sub-district or not. I love this district. I've been a parent in this district for a long time, but I too, I honestly thought about sitting out there tonight and not sitting up here, because I wanted to ask questions, and I wanted to be a part of the community that I know reached out. I know Sub District One and a lot of North Omaha, and I've had some South Omaha. I mean, everybody across this district has reached out. I believe that they voiced who they wanted for a candidate, and regardless of how you feel or not, I believe that they weren't listened to. So how do you reengage a community that showed up at the last minute, this quick turnaround because we just had to get these interviews done? How do we reengage that community? And I'll finish all of my commentary about this search right there.
I'm sure the Accountability Committee will be open to any recommendations, be willing to listen. So if you have, if you have any recommendations, please pass them along.
Mr. Scanlon, you know I will be the first one to pass some recommendations your way.
I don't doubt it.
Okay. Are there any other board members with comments? Because otherwise, I'll return to what I said in the beginning, which was that the Accountability Committee will be meeting tomorrow to come up with next steps for what it looks like, how do we determine, to determine recommendations, sorry, for next steps, of how do we determine an interim, what are our next steps that they think we should use for the search going forward, so that they can bring that to the board, so we can have a full board discussion and full board approval on how we're going to determine the interim and what the next process looks like. I think part of that, as has been mentioned, is us doing some self-reflection and looking back at what did work well with the search, what didn't work so well. And I think we've all, I think we've all learned a thing or two about superintendent searches. And as Mrs. Gotti mentioned, it is not uncommon in large urban school districts, universities, any type of large organization, to not have a first search workout. I had board members from across the country tell me that this search wasn't going to work when we first started. And I told them, oh no, watch, it will work, we'll come together around this. And I had to call them and say, okay, we should have listened to you from the start and taken more lessons from you. I think, so I am going to task all of us on our board with a couple of things. First is to be expecting to hear from the Accountability Committee, to get your feedback on things that went well, things that need improvement in your recommendations and ideas for moving forward. The second ask that I'm going to make of you all tonight is, I think, other things that the search process has shown is, we do have some areas of dysfunction on our board. We have some areas of growth, we have some areas of learning that we all need to do together. And so I know Mr. Ray sent us all an email today asking availability to do some board training, if you can all get back to him, so that we can do some board training in many different areas that we need to. That will, I think that will do a lot, if we do some basic team building, board training, things that, quite frankly, when a few of us were elected in 2013, we had the opportunity to do as a group before we took office, and we haven't had as an opportunity as this group to do that together. Yes, Mr. Pearlman?
I just have one other question that I was thinking about while you were talking that I, just because I'm trying to flush through all that happened here. Do we know who wrote that joint statement?
I would assume that the two candidates wrote it. We did not write it.
I'm not asking for an assumption, I'm just yes or no, do you know who wrote that statement?
I do not personally know who wrote that statement. I know it was not myself or any member of the Accountability Committee.
Okay, if anyone knows, I'd like to know.
All right, we will then move on to item 12B, which is Legislative Update. And I saw Mr. Lindsay. Do you have any pertinent updates to share with us?
Thank you. I've shared these with the Legislative Committee over our last couple of meetings, to bring the full board up to speed. We're at the time of the legislative session that really the only bills that are going to get debated are those which have priority designation, either what's called a senator priority, each senator gets one, a committee priority, each committee gets two, and then the speaker gets 25 speaker priorities. So I thought I would just touch on those that have been designated as speaker priority bills. There are several that deal with valuation, LB 144, 265, 640, all deal with valuation, which has an impact, of course, on TOSA, and redirecting dollars out of urban districts to more rural districts. The one that OPS has the most concern with is 640. Connie, Ms. Kenoke and I have met with Senator Grony to discuss that, and we'll, Senator Grony is the chair of the committee and the introducer of the bill, and we will continue to, continue to work with him to see if we can get it in a condition that would not harm LB 595, which during public comment was mentioned, that bill is a senator priority designation by Senator Grony. It does have an amendment that probably still would not address certainly the concerns that Mr. Pearlman has expressed during legislative committee calls, but it is on the floor and is likely to be debated. The Nebraska Reading Improvement Act, LB 651, is a senator priority that addresses K through three reading levels. And then there are two bills, the Education Committee priority bills that are very significant, LB 409, which changes the way of, or reduces the growth in TOSA from about, the formula would call for about a six and a half percent increase, it would reduce it to, right now, about a 2.1% increase, and we continue, Ms. Kenoke, and we are continuing to work on addressing that. LB 540 is up for hearing tomorrow. That is what we were hoping to push, what's called a temporary aid adjustment, as a preferred method of reducing the growth of TOSA, and we, that is not likely to happen. And then finally, it changes to OSERS, that when I say OSERS, it's actually to all of the plans sponsored by the state that would make some changes. Most significant is reducing to the rule of 85. Those, like I said, and also preventing what's referred to as double dipping, moving from one plan to another on retirement. Like I say, those apply not just to, would apply not just to OSERS, but to the state employees plan, county plan, state patrol, other plans administered by the state. And that's kind of the universe of bills that are issues that we'll be dealing with from now through the end of the session.
And I believe we adopted permanent rules, finally?
Yes, on the 49th day, you may have read about that, I think, on Friday or Saturday. Yeah, they have permanent rules in place, which hopefully will make the session go a little bit smoother from here on out.
Okay. Do legislative committee members or board members have questions or comments? Are you putting your hand up, Ms. Yeo? Before I recognize Ms. Yeo, I do want to thank Ms. Williams for going down and testifying on behalf of our board on the Charter School Bill. And she did an amazing job, and I have had people from so many other districts and organizations compliment the just amazing way you represented our district. So I do want to thank you very much, because I know you had a very, very tight schedule, being at spring break and everything that was going on with your daughter. So, and as a board, we are very grateful that you were able to go down and do that on our behalf. Ms. Williams?
It was, it was my honor, quite honestly, and I appreciate the teachers that were there and the conversations that we had afterwards. You know, OPS, and outside of current issues, we really have made the mark, and the work that we've done collectively the past four years is starting to show. And so it truly was an honor to represent our district, and not just our district, but public education across this great state. I just wanted to, I know that I didn't see the legislative position statement, I know that it was on the last board meeting, but I just wanted to share with the public that I have asked Mr. Ray to add that, just so that everyone is aware of where our current positions are, and they're not having to look at previous board meetings. We had, you know, a speaker about LB 595, and so that's something that we really need to share more, especially those issues that are related to our district and to education. We all should take a little bit more opportunity and share kind of what our stance as a board and our district is. Thank you.
And I think since the original posting, the matrix and position statements have been added. Mr. Ray? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Pearlman?
Forty minutes later, I'll just briefly finish. I just oppose the use of force bill by the, by teachers. I know it's, you know, I've spoken with the leadership of OEA about this more than a month ago when it first came up. a month ago when it first came up, and I hope to continue that conversation because there is, there's, are, is issues in some classrooms, but shifting a self-defense burden is kind of a reckless way to approach this problem. And so right now, I believe we're neutral on that bill or monitoring, pretty much the same thing. But I personally oppose it, I oppose it strongly. I think whoever it was here spoke earlier in public comment, again, that's the same, that's the same example I used, and not that it's going to happen a lot, but I think it would really prevent the prosecution of a teacher who assaulted a student. I don't know how you could, because they could say the student was, you know, just needed to leave the classroom. I think that's what the bill authorizes, and it authorizes use of physical force when it's self-defense law is already in place, so that's my comment on that.
All right, and we do, as you stated, currently have it as a monitor, and that is something that our Legislative Committee can go back and review, now that the bill has been moved out of committee, and I assume there's committee amendments?
Yes.
We can go back and review those, see how that changes the bill, and determine if we want to recommend a change to our position to bring to the board at our next meeting. All right, thank you for being here. And I believe the next item, my e-meetings is not updating, is item I to C, there we go, the design firm selection for the 2014 bond project with Columbia Elementary Replacement School. I believe Mr. Mark Summer will be coming up along with Emma Savery. Mr. Scanlon?
And I guess since I pulled it off the consent, the, what I was looking for, because we've had, obviously, in public comment, all I was looking for was the OPS administration explanation, so we can be transparent.
As mentioned before, there's kind of a multi-step process in any professional service selection the district does. In this particular case, the delta between the first firm and the second firm was 1.75 points, or 0.6% delta. Given that small delta, the selection committee, we asked the design firms to provide fee day of submission, that's kind of like their bid day, if you will, or proposal day, and given that small delta, the selection committee looked at fees, and in this case, because they felt it was a virtual tie from a points perspective, the objective measurement that could be utilized was fee. The second design firm was significantly lower in fee, and therefore, that's the recommendation you have in front of you.
Okay, are there additional board questions? Mr. Pearlman?
Just briefly, in percentage terms, can you tell us the difference in fee? Because I think I might have seen a figure, but I don't know the percentage, and I think that'd be really informative.
In figures, I don't have the percent off the top of my head, but it's about $70,000?
Correct, but I'm looking for, if you can, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but at some point, if we could get up what that represents as a whole...
Yeah, I can absolutely get that, just in a couple of minutes. I believe it's about a half a percent total fee, sorry. I was going to get more precise for you, but I believe that's the range of it.
Okay. Do we, Ms. Williams?
That's right, keep it MS. So I guess my question is, has this been an issue with other contracts?
The same process has been used from the beginning of the bond program. The same process has yielded 16 different prime design firms, so it does a good job, if you will, procedurally of identifying, you know, the best firm from a quality perspective and from a value perspective as well. We try to constantly balance those two things. And again, the, we see that in by the range of firms, from the large firms that are competing on this particular project to some of the smaller SCB firms, but having 16 different ones, we would be concerned from a procedural perspective if it was the same couple of firms continually being recommended by the selection committee, but in this case, we see the process working very well.
I just, and I ask that because we have lots of work to do, and I would hate to snub any firm and let one bid make that happen, so.
Actually, the two firms do...
Not quite sure where I sit on this right now, but I do appreciate your answers to the questions. To me, you've always come and done your due diligence, but I'm still not quite sure where I'm sitting on this one yet.
All right, Mr. Snow?
Okay, so, sorry. How many other contracts have been this close or that have been disputed? I'm just trying to, when Ms. Williams brought up her question on it, I mean, I'm still in the same boat, just trying to understand.
Yeah, I believe this is the tightest range we've had to date.
Okay, makes it harder now. Okay, thank you.
We have, we have had similar projects where, again, there's a significant delta in fee, and where there are the point scale, again, because it's based on 300, a few points, again, I understand numerically there's a difference in the value, but from a selection committee perspective, they feel both firms can deliver the quality of work necessary to execute it, and therefore, kind of the only objective route you have left is looking at that fee comparison.
Ms. Godding? Just curious, was this a CM at-risk project?
No.
No, okay. Because I've been through the process...
You know what, it follows the same process. The district hasn't made a decision on if this will be a CMR or not, that will be something that'll happen.
Right, that happens at the next level with the...
Yeah, but very, very similar process. It's a professional service selection identical, I believe, to what you experienced, except for architecture services versus construction.
Yeah. So if you've sat through any of the CM at-risk, and I've sat through a couple, Burke and Northwest for sure, it is sometimes very, very tight, and sometimes that fee helps to help you understand where it's at, but it can be very, very tight, so they're all good firms, right? So that's helpful.
All right, Mr. Scanlon?
Just for clarification, both of these firms have worked on projects in the bond program?
Correct, and both have been invited to continue to participate on active RFP projects.
Okay, and as Mrs. Godding was just saying, that sometime it's a very tight selection, only once it's determined, or I guess I'm asking, is it when it's only very closely determined that there's, you know, either firm would be a good selection? Is that the time that the actual fee envelope is opened and looked at?
The fees are opened from an evaluation perspective, when the points are, again, of that virtual tie. The other times the fee is open is just to ensure that there is value in the highest quality entity, and there's not multiple hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially. Some of these projects, again, because the process is similar, they're competing for $30 million worth of work, so that fee can be a pretty broad range. So we just want to make sure, again, for the quality of work and the delivery, the value or the fee to pay for that's competitive in the marketplace, for example.
Then my last question is just, in your professional opinion, why did these two firms come to the board to try to resolve this or try to bring it to our attention?
I couldn't comment on their positions on this issue, honestly.
I just, I'm not sure where this lands, but I want to implore both Mr. Wood and Mr. Johnson of your firms respectively, and your firms respectively, whichever way this goes, that, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and we don't want to lose the business that we do with you, and know, both firms are very valued. To me, this is kind of a technicality.